Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of August 27, 2013. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide and for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember De Nier.
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Here. And City Attorney Mark, would you please lead us in the pledge?
My public allegiance to our fight, the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of announcements this evening. I would like to recognize one of our residents, Jennifer Carey. She made her world championship debut in the 400-meter heats earlier this month in Moscow, and she was asked to run for Ireland. So, it's a good thing. Congratulations to Jennifer. Also, as you probably know, but I will remind all of you, on September the 9th, we will be having a third anniversary, if you will, memorial up at the site of the blast that occurred three years ago, and it starts at 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. In addition to the memorial, we will actually welcome some new residents who have rebuilt. So, it's going to be happy and sad at the same time. We'd like to welcome all of you to that evening. The Beautification Task Force is accepting nominations for the annual Beautification Awards Program. Applications can be found on the website as well as in the city clerk's office, and the deadline is Friday, August 30th, this Friday, at 5:00 p.m. Do you need to say anything, Irene?
No. Well, I just urge anyone who has a neighbor, or if you are particularly proud of your own property, to look on the website and put in your nomination, and we will recognize you if you win in your category on the October, the first council meeting in October. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, presentations. This evening, we're going to receive an oral report from the 2013 San Bruno Sister City Student Exchange Delegation to Narita, Japan.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. We are here this evening to share our recent experience visiting our sister city in Narita, Japan. So first, I'd like to introduce you to this year's delegation. My name's Jenny Tucker, and I'm with the Community Services Department. If you want to just raise your hand, because I don't want to turn around here. Okay, so we have with us today Jessica David, Charlene Smith, Joe Costa, and Chris Marquez. And our other four student delegation members that were not able to be here are Karina, Michelle, Kyle, and David, and they send their regrets, but they did have prior engagements with school. And then we have our teachers, Gordon Wee, who's a teacher, a sixth-grade teacher at Parkside, Connie Manahano, who is our school counselor at Parkside, and then our parent volunteer helper and our everything, was Selena Welsh. So, I'd like to personally thank you for continuing our Sister City program. Our experience in Narita was something that we'll never forget, and we all feel so lucky to have been able to go this year. From the moment we stepped off the plane in Narita to the moment we arrived safely back in San Bruno, the Narita City staff and the International Friendship Society treated us so well. The entire visit was perfectly planned to meet all of our needs, and even when our trip is extended a few days due to the SFO accident, the Narita City staff made sure we were well taken care of. And I don't think any of us, we'll try tonight, but I don't think any of us could really even put into words how kind and generous everyone in Narita was to us. So, they will all be sharing their favorite moments of the trip, but before, we have a quick slideshow of some of our major activities that we kind of picked out. We had a lot of photos, so we had to narrow it down here for you, but this first picture is the Narita and San Bruno delegation, and this was taken on the first night in Narita at their city hall. And then this is just a picture of our first presentation, and all the students had to, our Parkside students, had to give a presentation and introduction in Japanese, and they did very well. And then if you see in the bottom right corner there, the San Bruno and Narita sign, which made us all feel very at home and welcome. And then, similar to when Narita comes to visit us in March, this is our students performing for the Narita Sister City delegation, and our students actually invited the Narita students up to perform with them. So, this was a picture of all of them, and then the students there are the ones who our students stayed with, with the home visits. So at night, they would go and stay with them. One of the days, they took us to one of the elementary, or the middle school, and we got to see how the Japanese go to school and experience all of that, which we had a good time, learning all about the different ways of school, and I think all of us were very impressed by the Japanese school. I have two pictures on this one. The first one is the Lunch at Shabu Shabu, which we wanted to put on here because we were really lucky this year with our group. We were all very adventurous with our eating and trying new things. We all tried things we never thought we would ever try, and the Narita staff were so excited about it. They were just really excited they didn't have to do any fast food for us, and they really spoiled us with our lunches and our meals. And then on the right, the other side is a picture when we visited the automobile college, where they got, kids got to go around, and some of the adults that were willing to, drive around in the racetracks with the fast cars that the Japanese were building. So that was kind of fun. This is one, a picture of our day trip to Kamakura, which is about two hours away, and we got to visit the Big Buddha. And then, one of the main things that all of our delegations get to participate in every year is the Gion Festival, and this is really special to the Narita people because only residents or special guests get to participate in this. And so that's why we were wearing the red jackets that represented we were part of the city of Narita. So that was fun. We got to pull the dashi, which is in the right corner over there, through the town. And then that evening, we were able to spend the night at a temple, and all of the host families were there with us, and they all spent the night, well, the children spent the night, and then in the morning, they had a bunch of activities. In the upper-left corner, we're making mochi, we got to ring the bell and do some artwork, and on the bottom-right, we were all dancing. Well, I was taking the picture, that was them dancing. But we had a great time. So, I would like to introduce the people to come on up individually, and they're going to share with you their favorite experience. And then I have two people that were not able that wanted me to share with them, so they wrote me an email with their little speech, so. Who wants to go first?
Konnichiwa. My name is Jessica. Over the summer, I visited Japan along with Parkside Intermediate School's Sister City Exchange Program. While there, I was able to enjoy many different aspects of Japanese culture, including food, school, recreation, and overall lifestyle. I was treated with great hospitality by each of my three host families, as well as the city officials. Having been an avid fan of anime, manga, and Japanese pop culture, I was able to speak a considerable amount of the language and was flattered to be commended by native speakers when I tried to make conversation. I made a lot of friends, many of whom I still speak to today, and my overall stay in Japan was a pleasant one and a great learning experience. I hope to visit again someday. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Christopher Marquez. My experience during Japan was a blast. I enjoyed everything about Japan. I had a wonderful time. What is different here from Japan is the streets, because they are very clean. The weather is much more humid, and that they are really good at recycling materials. What is different from homes here to homes in Japan is that the Japan houses are much smaller than homes here. They make use of what space they have really well. What I loved about the culture is that the people are very respectful and polite to one another. I also noticed that all the cars that were on the road were very clean and excellent condition. Something I would like to bring from Japan is the Japanese Kit Kat candy. I found flavors that they do not offer here in the U.S.
Konnichiwa. My name is Charlene. My experience in Japan was amazing. It was my first time being out of the country, and it was certainly a great first international trip. The host families I stayed with were very nice, and we became good friends. I miss them a lot, but at least I still keep in touch with them over email. I loved walking down the streets of Narita. I loved how narrow and cute the roads were. What really amazed me were how many people I saw riding bicycles everywhere. When we visited the Narita Junior High School, almost all of the students biked to school each day, unlike here, where almost everyone drives to school each day. When we arrived at the school, I saw they had a huge parking lot just for bikes. There were at least, I'd say, 100 bikes parked there. It was pretty impressive. To me, it represented a very healthy and eco-friendly lifestyle. Another thing that also amazed me was Narita's newly-admitted Recreation Center. We got to take a tour of their rec center, and the whole time, I was in awe at all the things they had in the large facility. They had a daycare center, a library, a music room, a stage room, a museum, a sports room, all in one building, and it was all very new. If I could make a wish for San Bruno to have, it would be a new, nice, big rec center, especially with a stage room, because I like dancing. I like to dance and sing, so a stage room, like an auditorium, would be really nice. I think the Sister City program is a great program for two cities to stay close even when they are far away. It is a great way for young adults like me to have a once-in-a-lifetime experience and make good friendships with people from halfway across the world. Thank you.
Hello? Okay. "Boku wa," or "Konichiwa, boku wa desu." That is translated into "Hello, my name is Joe." First of all, what I am wearing is a traditional Japanese clotheswear called a kimono. Also, this is Narita's mascot. His name is Unarikun. Sorry, my bad. Unarikun, which is translated into an eel that flies, because Narita is very famous for its airport. First, I would like to thank everyone who dedicated their time to help us. Ms. Welsh, Mr. Wee, Ms. M., and of course, Ms. Tucker. One thing I loved about Japan is because it's a fast-paced technology world, but it's also combined to a cultural place, which is very beautiful and very high-tech. One of my favorite things about Japan was the fire department. We actually got to drive inside the fire truck, and we actually got to beep the horn, which is my favorite part. We got to wear the fire department's clothes and actually got to wear a gas mask, which is very exciting. But when we were gone, a tragic happened here in SFO, which the airplane crashed. And it was very sad for us, but we got to spend another day in Japan, where we went out and went to Tokyo, which was very fun. The end.
Hello? Oh, okay. My name is Gordon Wee. I'm the sixth-grade math science teacher at Parkside. So, I'll just do a little quick background. I actually went to Parkside years ago, and I heard about this program. So, I was not selected back then, so it was cool to be a coordinator on this trip and being able to go finally years later. And I can't really pinpoint one actual place or event, because every single day was a new adventure. It was pretty much for me just kind of taking in the culture and seeing what we can bring back from the Japanese culture to here in America. I've never experienced such generosity, and the way they've, I felt like I was royalty there, because they picked us up every single day, they provided meals, they catered to our schedule, and made sure that every second of our trip was planned. So, I mean, I came back just in awe of Japan and wanting to go back, so I just hope that, just from this year, that this program continues, because, I mean, I speak for everyone else that we just had probably one of the best experiences that we'll always remember. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Connie Manahano, and I'm the counselor over at Parkside. I felt very, very privileged to be chosen to be a chaperone this year, given that I'm fairly new to Parkside. The whole entire experience was just so fulfilled of wonderful, great experiences altogether. I was really impressed in how well they take care of their environment, their community, their cleanliness, their lack of waste. We even visited a waste center that was thoroughly impressive. When I asked them if they had any landfills, they said, "What are landfills?" I said, "That answers my question." They were extremely polite, and they were very respectful towards one another. They had a lot of unity, and they were very cohesive and working together as a community. There were just so many things that were incredibly impressive. Overall, was really truly impressive on how they truly cared to learn from other cultures. They have partnerships with other countries as well as with the U.S. They take great value in investing in relationships, and in relationships such as the one that they have with us here in San Bruno. I'll never forget the warm welcome we received from city hall. They must have had about 200 to 300 people standing outside the building when we arrived, and they were clapping as if we were celebrities. I mean, I truly was overwhelmed. You guys remember that? Honestly, it really brings me to a bit of sadness, because in the short experience I've had, I see a great disparity among the effort and the detail, the resources, and just their investment in the partnership that they believe is important to them compared to us here in San Bruno. I'm not here to, I understand there's some kind of tug-of-war between the school district and the city and who should do what, and I don't have enough knowledge to, or even care to put any blame or any sort of that matter, but I truly, truly hope that you find that this program is surely worth continuing. It is such a fantastic program, not just for us chaperones and the awesomeness that they treat us with, but the experiences these children come back with, to be better people, to be better citizens for our city. It's so fantastic and worthwhile, and just what they learn and the cultural learning, it really is priceless. I've also had the opportunity to speak with a number of people who participated in the past, and they have nothing but wonderful, awesome experiences to share, and even some have gone back now as adults to Narita, because they had such a wonderful experience. Our wonderful Japanese counterparts really do have it together. They value the partnership, they're interested in us as a people, our values, our culture, and our environment. They truly care about having longstanding friendships. The events that they did for us were so thoughtful, well-planned, organized, down to the very last detail. Even the gifts that they would give to us were meticulously wrapped. I was so impressed. What I will remember most and take with me was their eagerness to connect with us, their eagerness to be our friends, and their willingness to seek out our friendship. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
My name is Selena Welsh, and this year, I had the opportunity to be a volunteer program coordinator for Parkside School, and would like to take this opportunity to remind you that what a fantastic program we have. And on behalf of our school community, I would like to thank the City Council for allowing this program to continue. We would like to also thank the city of San Bruno, the Sister City, the Lions Club, and San Bruno Park School District for their continuing support of the program. Without any of this, we wouldn't be able to do this wonderful program. This year, like every year, our student had experienced so much that I could spend hours giving you the report, but I'm limited to only two minutes, so I better speak very fast and very brief. From the first day, we were wandering through the old city center and historical street of Narita. The students learned to appreciate walkable streets and people's friendly spaces compared to big boulevards. They also saw how the beauty of the surrounding and attention to detail of every object has a great positive impact on people's attitudes and behavior. They saw that how considerations of aesthetics extend to everything in people's daily lives and create a harmonious existence. It is great to see students in a position of not understanding the language and learning to navigate through very foreign places and being foreign students in local public school. This definitely brings awareness and sympathy to the difficulties of follow students here who do not have a great understanding of our language and culture, and taught them not to be too quick to judge people based on this. I also would like to give a report on, I did ask them to think about how visitor-friendly our city is for foreigners, also being an airport city, and hopefully that they will one day give their feedback to our city in the future. A couple of things we discussed when I was there is with our Sister City, is that concern about the rivalry between Narita and the newly reopened Haneda Airport, which is now operating 24 hours, and they're very concerned, because that takes away the income of their airport. And they didn't want it to make Narita into a 24-hours airport, because they're so concerned with the citizen and noise and the pollution. So, they want to remain that, and we should support them in this any way we can. On this trip, one of our delegates was Parkside School Counselor Ms. Manahano, and this was a benefit, because it enabled us to lend some support and give guidance and advice to our counterparts in this issue of teen problems. We talked about this problem and shared our resource and information and our approach to them, and we believe that this is very, very fruitful for both the city. One experience that we all learned from was our return flight being canceled due to this crash at the SFO, and eventually getting home three days late. What we all learned was the only way to get through this was for everybody to hang together and keep a positive attitude with a little bit of good sense of humor, and we got home safely. And we want to express our gratitude to our host, the city of Narita, for all the help and support they gave us at this challenging time. It definitely brought us closer together, and thank you all for supporting us and allow us to continue with the program, and I hope the program will be continued every year from now on. Thank you.
I have just two more students, really quick, I'll read them, because I know they'd feel bad if I missed out on them, but this one's from David Umbertis, and he said, "I was fortunate to be part of the San Bruno-Narita Exchange Program. This was by far one of the greatest trips I've ever been on. We did everything you can imagine. Everyone was nice and helpful to make sure we were never left out." He said, "My host family was very nice to me and Christopher, and I've never been treated like that anywhere besides my home and by my mother. My host fam, my host mom felt like my real mom. She made sure we were okay, and if we wanted anything to eat or drink." He said, "I hope I get to go back to Japan so many more times that they are used to me. I also like to give a special thanks to our counselors. They made this trip even better with their presence. Like I said, I can't wait to go back to Japan. I'll be sure to bug my mom about it every day." I would like to close by saying that when I'm older, I will help this program to continue prospering, to give another eighth grader a chance to go to Narita. I want them to experience this once-in-a-lifetime experience. And then Karina's really quick, is "This summer, I had an amazing opportunity to go to the beautiful country of Japan. It's been a dream of mine ever since I was a little girl, and I couldn't believe that my dream actually came true. The trip was everything I could have hoped for, and I was so, I have so many special memories. I was so happy to be able to spend time with my Japanese friends that I hosted in March. I especially enjoyed eating the Japanese food, and the people in Japan were so kind and generous to us. I really hope to go back to Japan again someday, because this trip meant everything to me." And I know she really wanted to be here tonight, so. And I just want to, again, kind of close up by saying thank you for your support and dedication to our Sister City program. As you can tell, we all had an amazing experience, and I can confidently say that San Bruno was well-represented by this year's delegation of talented and personable students and teachers. And we do have a mayor's gift from the mayor of Narita to our mayor, Ruane, that we'd like to present to you, and this was given to us the first night. We kept it safe for you, even through customs. And then, that wraps up our presentation, so if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer. Otherwise, we're just happy, again, and thank you for allowing this program to continue.
Sorry, one more thing. I know I said it before, but a rec center, like a new rec center, would be awesome. Like, I'm sure everyone in San Bruno would love a new, huge rec center. That would like, yeah, that would be, that would make me so happy, and a lot of my friends happy, and everyone happy. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Before I say anything, I'm going to open this. It's a big box of Kit Kats.
Yeah. No, that wouldn't have made it that.
Let's see what it is. No, it's not Kit Kats. It sucks. It's like Japanese moonshine, I think. This program, first of all, thank all of you, Jenny and your group. I know it was a challenge getting home, and you worked through it, and we were on pins and needles waiting for your arrival, actually. It's a wonderful program. A number of years ago, I had the opportunity to participate and visit Japan when then-mayor Franzella was the mayor and I was the vice mayor. I must say, we did a few other things that you weren't able to do, but we had a great time. It's wonderful. It was wonderful. And, you know, my son-in-law, who's just turned 30, went to Parkside and still keeps in touch with the people that he stayed with in Japan, and they visit each other when they're back and forth. So, it's an exciting program, it's a great cultural event for this city, and we are trying to keep this going. San Bruno, in the past couple of years, has had some challenges financially, so has Narita, and so we're trying to work through those. I want you to be sure of that. So, thank you very, very much, and congratulations.
Item number five is a review of the agenda. If there's no objection, I'd like to move item 11, which is the annual report of the Senior Advisory Committee, to write after item eight, public hearings. Item number six, approval of the minutes, special study session of July 9th and 19th, 2013, and city council meeting of July 23rd, 2013. There are no errors, corrections, or omissions. There'll be-
Through the chair?
Yes. Mr. Ibarra?
Not to be a little picky, but I was, I did attend, I did attend the council meeting on the 23rd. It states so correct that I was not excused, I was there.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other errors, corrections, or omissions, the minutes will stand approved as submitted with the one adjustment. A consent calendar, item seven, all items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
Through the chair. Move to pull item G.
to send it to Oakland or South City or Sacramento in order to have some type of maintenance or upkeep. The information I received back tells me, and it's noted that this is not necessarily, there is a note that there will be some stuff that's done in-house, but it will not preclude us from going outside in order into having outsourcing of that type of activity. So what I was trying to find out is what the overall cost is. For example, if we keep 100% of it after the training, we might have to get certain tools, parts. There's the labor factor that is involved for our staff doing that, the two mechanics. And then what do we spend on an annual basis when we have it going out currently? I understand there's a tow. I understand there's staff. I understand we have it down as far as service. But I'm trying to understand in the bigger picture is where's the cost, where's the savings, and where's the value?
Councilmember Medina previously requested information regarding the cost, and I believe that the number that was provided was $11,000 as the amount that the city has spent over the past year for maintenance of the Vector equipment. That number does not include full calculation of the value of downtime for staff or related activities that are not paid cash out of pocket. So we have not had an opportunity to calculate the all-end cost and to give you a complete answer, but that gives you a little bit of, a little bit of perspective. Talking with the director earlier today, there are a couple of different ways to evaluate the cost-effectiveness of the proposal that is in front of you tonight, and that is to expend approximately $4,000 for lodging and travel. That would be required to allow our two mechanics to take advantage of training that is offered as part of the purchase of the Vector equipment. Using that $4,000 as the city's cost for the, taking advantage of that training, we would need to look at the opportunity both to provide better troubleshooting and to minimize our exposure of necessary, for costs associated with necessary maintenance and repair of the equipment by being able to better evaluate what, what might be needing to be adjusted with the equipment, to be able to perform going forward, basic maintenance tasks, and importantly, to be able to extend the useful life of the equipment along into the future. The equipment itself has an approximate 10-year lifespan, but we anticipate being able to, through better troubleshooting and better maintenance, to be able to both extend the useful life of the equipment, avoid downtime, and provide, where we can, in-house services to perform basic maintenance tasks. The council member is correct that it will not eliminate the need potentially for the equipment to be serviced out of house, but it is an important initiative for the city's ability to properly operate, maintain, and as I indicated, avoid long-term exposure to cost.
Through the chair. Out of the 11,000 plus, then how much of that would still need to go outside the department in order to have maintenance and/or repair or service?
Based on our best estimate, you could assume that improving the diagnostic skill of our mechanics, they will be able to eliminate at least one trip to a outside shop. The estimated cost for one trip to a outside shop would be around roughly $5,000. The average cost of the service of 3,000 plus the $2,000 for staff time for the two-day lost taking the equipment there and back, that if, they will be able to eliminate one trip that would already pay more back to the city than how much would our cost for the training.
So the average is $5,000 per trip, and if we spent over $11,000, let's just say that could be two trips, maybe?
No. How the 12,000 was calculated, only does the outside service, how much was paid to that shop. That, that was based on four service last year. That if you are dividing 12,000 with four, then would be 3,000 plus one service cost paid to that outside shop, plus the 2,000 staff time, that would be in average $5,000 cost for a trip, not counting the downtime.
Does this require us to get additional tools and parts and maintain them within the shop?
Not at this time, no.
Will it?
I am not aware, and none of us are aware at this time, that would require any additional tools for this level of additional diagnostics.
Okay. I appreciate the comments.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Michael?
Have some questions as well. So it looks like we're making some basic assumptions in terms of what type of service is being done, regular maintenance versus repairs for something that was broken, and what the mechanics will be able to repair in-house versus what absolutely needs to be sent to an outside expert. And so I'm wondering how, I mean, how confident we are in those numbers?
This is an estimate, like any estimate is based on our best judgment and knowledge. You are making certain assumption, but the history is a very good indicator, and the 12,000 was calculated on last year, information, financial information, and also the staff time needed for one trip was based on actual time spent. That $5,000, I feel very comfortable now that the assumption is that they will be able to eliminate at least one trip. That is the assumption, but our best, our assumption is that they will be able to eliminate more than one. But our comments and responses were very conservative, assuming the worst case and not necessarily the best case. Certainly, our goal would be to even further reduce the number of trips. Even if those trips, how the city manager said, will always be necessary. Our mechanical shop never will be equipped or will have the capability to perform major repairs for those very complicated and complex equipment.
And as you mentioned to me earlier, the training itself is actually being provided without cost to the city by the manufacturer, and it's just the travel and expense that we're discussing here?
It is correct. That was included in the overall cost of the equipment itself.
And one other question, in terms of the utilization of the mechanics currently, so if we're going to take some new routine maintenance or preventive maintenance tasks related to the Vector and put those on those mechanics, are they going to now be overutilized? Do they have the capacity now to take on the additional work in addition to what we currently have them doing?
Their capacity is limited. The city has two mechanics, and whenever the capacity, they need additional support or they cannot manage the volume of work depending based on the picking of the workload, then they will need to rely on outside support.
Okay. So we may be right back where we started, but at least it's an attempt to bring some of that in-house.
It is correct.
Okay. So another idea I threw out earlier when I was talking with the director was that perhaps we look at training the operators as mechanics so that they can maintain their own equipment rather than relying on separate, a separate job function that's a mechanic to do. We had a little bit of a discussion there in terms of what the right skill set is for that. But it's still an idea I'd like to consider where we perhaps put more of that responsibility on the operators, even if it's not sending them to this particular training. And also consider, considering not just for this opportunity, but for any other training opportunity, where we choose people that might be better, better able to bring the knowledge back and then transfer that knowledge to their coworkers so that we have sort of a train-the-trainer opportunity and then sort of expand that training, not just to the person that we're sending, but to the, to the rest of the group. From what I understand, we're sending one person, we have one training session identified where one person will attend, and then the other person is to be determined because the next session hasn't been defined yet, so.
It is correct. The city has two mechanics. One, the first mechanic will go to the next training session, and the second mechanic will go in the spring for the second session. And your comments will be taken under advisement. Certainly, even in this case, the department will make sure that the knowledge what they gain will be transferable, and they will share with the operator as much as they can. More importantly, for the preventive maintenance, which is very critical for the operators to understand.
Okay. Very good. And to share with my colleagues as well, something we discussed is that going forward, there are going to be some opportunities to look at sharing of resources across the cities, and it's something that the department is constantly looking for, and there will be some opportunities there to make sure that we're taking advantage of expertise in our neighboring cities. Thank you.
Through the chair. Just following up, how do we look back and determine whether this was a success? Whether or not this was a good investment of money, whether we're finding ourselves in a, you know, like you said, the $5,000. So do we, from a year from now, look back at this and say, money well spent? You know, I know there's a third factor that may or may not come up in CIP. Does that mean additional for that? It's obviously because we bought these two newer Vectors that obviously we now need the assistance because obviously you need to train on the new machinery. I know the police cars, I believe, used to be done out of the shop when they became, they came in new and they were geared up and all the apparatuses were put inside. If my understanding is correct, those are no longer done here, or are they still done here in the shop?
If I, if I remember right, those services are provided by outside shops, and they are taken, taken for service to outside facilities.
And I'm going back in history, might have been because it was, police vehicles were a simpler thing back then. It was not all the stuff that they have in today, but in the same time, the Vector's the same thing. Technology advances, the particulars of it does. So I'm trying to understand why in one facet, we have it out, done outside, and here we're going to do more inside. I just am concerned, as councilmember Alizar said, as far as the time, there's X number of hours in a day, and now there's additional stuff they're going to do. And the comment you made was if there was not going to be, if the workload became too much within that division, that we'd have to go outside again.
How, responding to your question, how I would see the success can be measured two years from now with the downtime of those two equipment, what the city owns now, and also with the cost of major repairs, which will have to be performed by outside specialized shops.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on item G, your action?
Move to approve item G.
Second.
Motion a second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item G passes. Item number eight, public hearings. We don't have any public hearings this evening. We'll move right to item number 11, which is the annual report of the Senior Advisory Committee. And I believe Florrie Green's going to give it this evening?
Good evening. I'm Florrie Green, representing the San Bruno Senior Advisory Committee, Advisory Board. John is going to be doing the visuals for me. Okay, well, here's the front, which shows a lot of the things that we do at the senior center with, we are one of the most, we have one of the most varied programs anywhere, and a lot of people take advantage of all of the things that we have to offer, from billiards to bingo and lots of good food, according to our members, and the bocce ball, which is very, very popular. These are the members of our advisory board. Going from left to right is myself, Elisa Giraldi, Dorothy Carmichael, in the bottom row, Ken Kreisel, Bill Goff, our chairman, Barbara Lusejich, our vice chair, and Ellen Dolaney, who is not in the picture, unfortunately, but she's here in person. Raise your hand, Ellen. So, which is better than on a picture. Okay, next. Okay, we are very, very welcoming community center, as you can see by the number of attendance that we have. Our participation continues to grow every year. Year-to-date, we already have reached 70,222 this year, and we continue to maintain a high level of participation, which seems to increase every year. As I mentioned before, our, our meals are very good. Our nutritious, nutrition staff consistently provides balanced and tasty meals to all of our participants, and again, the meals served, we've reached almost 22,000 already this year. It's a very vibrant program and enjoyed by most. Transportation needs is one of the very, very important services that we offer. Our ridership is up quite a bit from the 2011, 2012 period, and in the last two years, we've seen a marked increase in ridership. This service is vital in making it possible for otherwise homebound seniors to get out of the house and to get some human contact and healthy meals. Every day, I hear comments about how grateful they are that they are able to get out of the house because being home alone and old and perhaps sick is no fun. So this is a great service that the community offers. Human services assistance, again, is very important, as many seniors have many questions. This year, we've answered over 800 calls and in-person inquiries for assistance of all kinds with housing, employment, insurance, and various other service referrals. We get questions about every conceivable subject, and our referral assistance is a great help to the members of the community who many times don't know where to get that As I mentioned, we have a very, very varied program. There's more programs than even are listed there. These are our most popular ones. The bingo, I happen to work on the bingo program, and I'm always astonished at the great joy that people get out of playing bingo three or four and sometimes five days a week. We have regulars that go different places, but they always come to us because they say... Human services assistance, again, is very important as many seniors have many questions. This year, we've answered over 800 calls and in-person inquiries for assistance of all kinds with housing, employment, insurance, and various other service referrals. We get questions about every conceivable subject and our referral assistance is a great help to the members of the community who many times don't know where to get that As I mentioned, we have a very, very varied program. There's more programs than even are listed there. These are our most popular ones. The bingo, I happen to work on the bingo program and I'm always astonished at the great joy that people get out of playing bingo three or four and sometimes five days a week. We have regulars that go different places, but they always come to us because they say it's the best. The aerobics classes also, including zumba, which is something new, is fantastic. The classes have a huge participation and it's just great fun to see people of our age or the seniors' age, that they can move so well, so fast, and have such a ball doing it. It is really invigorating to see the aerobics class for folks that are sometimes 80 and I think our oldest participant is 93. So that's, it's great fun to watch from my perspective. And as you can see, the bingo is our biggest participatory item and all the others go up each year as well. The kitchen, I've mentioned a little bit, a couple of times before. A lot of it is done by volunteers. We have over 200 active volunteers in every aspect of our services who've given us a total of over 26,000 hours in 2012, 2013. We have our nutrition volunteers, some of whom are shown here, the receptionists, sports volunteers, bingo volunteers, and people who arrange and manage our trips, which are great fun and enjoyed by all. Accomplishments for the year, this is something that is really good to see. We've had a lot. In this last year, we have acquired a new sound system for the multipurpose room, which was donated by the senior endowment fund. Excuse me. We have recommended and introduced new classes and programs, the Friday Zumba, which is really well received. We had a program on fall prevention and rethinking your retirement, both of which were well-attended. Our, in participation in all our sports increases all the time and it includes bocce ball, horseshoes, softball, ping pong, and I guess billiards, if you consider that a sport. I don't know. The computer club is, the computer club has also attracted more and more members. They give, they give special presentations, present classes, and one-on-one help to people who need it. And that's very much enjoyed by some of us who are not as technologically wise as some of our younger folk. We have also developed a fixed group for the senior center bus as part of a grant requirement. And as I've mentioned before, that is so, so important to get our people out. So I think we're doing very well and have accomplished a lot. Nevertheless, we, next slide, the next, nevertheless, we have more goals for the coming year. We are recommending a replacement of the sound mixer that we have to accept more current technologies that everybody now has and that would be very helpful. We're also recommending a purchase of a photocopier. Ours is 12 years old and not as effective as it should or could be, so we hope to get that this year. And in addition, we continue to evaluate the existing programs and recommend new ones to respond to member needs. We have suggestions at our meetings and we try to abide by those and see what we can do. So in addition, I would just like to add my many thanks to the senior staff who make it, everything so runs so smoothly. We have John Alida, our Assistant Community Service Director, Susan Merzni, who is the Supervisor of Information and Referral, and she's got her hands full, Mary Tessier, Recreation Service and in charge of all the recreational programs, the sports and so forth, and Gloria Dieter, who is our Nutrition Program Chair and does an absolutely fabulous job. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Flori?
Yes. Flori? I'm, thank God you didn't mention me as your, as your council liaison because I've been a terrible liaison. But I do want, I do, I do have a few months to make that up, but I do want to impress upon, it's, it's amazing what goes on here and the amount of volunteer hours and the activities and, and it's, it's not even arguable that this is the best senior center in the county. But what I know is that there are some concerns about the facilities and so if, is, is your advisory board considering long-term plans as far as general maintenance and? I, I bring this up because every time I see Coach Ken out there, he's got a concern about that bocce ball court. So.
There are.
Yeah. I know there's no major undertakes, but I mean, and you're taking care of things, you know, and thank God we, the kitchen equipment's working well. But I know that it's, you know, that there has to be some concern about certain things and so that's something that I'd like to discuss with, you know, with advisory board, you know, in the coming months.
There are a couple of things that have come up and that we are working on, such as the benches and the bocce ball court, I think, has been brought up. But I'll defer to John to answer this more thoroughly.
Thanks, Flori. We routinely entertain the requests of the members at the meeting and the concerns that you've mentioned that Ken has talked about, we have referred to facility staff, they have done an assessment of the court and some of the benches on the deck outside and so they are putting it into their work product processes to make sure that we accomplish that during, during the year. In terms of some of the capital equipment, the, I have been preparing a, a list of all the large capital equipment that we do have here in the senior center, along with its purchase date and its age, so that we can address needs sort of as they're, or before they become a problem. And the advisory board as well, who recommends expenditures from the trust fund, have been very aware of that and so we, we hope that as these things arise, we will be coming forward with recommendations and, but we certainly, I think, the advisory board would welcome some more conversation with, with you.
Anyone else? Well, Flori, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
From the council for your report. I think you should take up billiards, actually.
Maybe.
And, you know, the senior center is in fact a community within the community, so you do a wonderful job.
It's a great place.
Thank you very much. Item number nine, public comment and item's not on the agenda. It's the council's policy for matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and or action where necessary and appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council? Mr. Rico?
Mr. Rico, Seventh Avenue. I'm here with two quick things, comment or two on the, from the Chamber of Commerce and also on mosquitoes. Just to remind everyone in the room and in the viewing audience, this Sunday, we're cosponsoring a blood drive with Blood Centers of the Pacific from 10 to 2 on Samatello Avenue. Blood Mobile will be parked in the north driveway parking lot of Citibank and we thank them for that. You can go online, I put some flyers out earlier, and make an appointment ahead of time or they will take walk-ins. Sunday, October 6th, Congresswoman Jacqui Spear, State Senator Jerry Hill, Assemblyman Kevin Mullen, County Supervisor Dave Fine, and not last in any way, but our own San Bruno Mayor, Jim R. Wayne will be there to, if you can come down and you can pigeonhole them and talk one-on-one on them, complain or otherwise. On the Sunday, October 13th, we've invited the four members that are running for the city council to have a individual booth, so if you want to come and talk to them and find their positions, we offer you that opportunity. And finally, on October 20th, we've invited the four candidates that are running for the school board to have individual booths and you can come and hopefully talk to them one-on-one and become a more educated voter. This is one of the little extra things that the Chamber of Commerce is doing and it's also another reason to come to Farmers Market on Sunday. And wearing my second hat as your representative of the mosquito district, you've read in the newspaper that about a week ago, they found a mosquito in Menlo Park area that tested positive for yellow fever, the first one in the area in a number of years. Working with the county, the district placed over 60 CO2 traps at about a mile out circular around the location. They collected all sorts of mosquitoes, but none of which showed, showed yellow fever. They are repositioning halfway in at about a half-mile radius, another 60 CO2 traps to try and make sure that there are no more mosquitoes carrying yellow fever. And a couple of months ago, in Fresno, they found a mosquito carrying yellow fever, so the district is sending a couple of our key personnel down to meet with the Fresno mosquito district people to learn what worked, what potentially didn't work in their area, so that we can, we and the residents of San Bruno, Sematello County can better benefit from, from that. As I learn more, I will be happy to keep you informed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think Irene has a question for you.
Yes.
The information that you gave us about the activities that are going on, or there will be going on at the Farmers Market, is that on the San Bruno Chamber's website?
It should be. I will make, I'll make sure that Jamie's got it on there, but it should be on the website.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else like to address the council? Tell us your name and your street.
My name is Marty Medina. I live on Garden Avenue. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and fellow San Brunans and guests. My name is Marty Medina and I'm running for San Bruno City Council. I wish to be up there to lead the city into the next 100 years, maybe the first 10, but not the first 100. But I wanted to comment on the recent past. As plenty of people know, on May 8th, 2012, the city council voted to increase San Bruno's water and sewer rates by approximately 10% per year for 10 years. The meeting can still be viewed on YouTube if you look under San Bruno, May 8th, 2012, City Council Water and Sewer Rate Increases. On that night, as a San Bruno Public Works Inspector with over 10 years of experience, I joined numerous other protesters. And unfortunately, city council only had two written choices. One, proceed with the 10% increases for five years, or two, do nothing. That in itself was wrong. There should have been something in between. You can't have 10% for five years and zero as a choice. I suggested at that meeting that there be an alternative, that we go ahead and have an increase for a year and then we reexamine how we do infrastructure improvements in San Bruno. But despite my protest and 360 other written protests, the council voted 3 to 2. So we got to live with that. In the discussion prior to the vote, some council members questioned, well, how are we doing with these projects that we're proposing to do? What has been done? Give us some details of construction costs, design costs. And I remember specifically, there's a question from Councilman Salazar that asked, when can we reevaluate the unsustainable increases? What could we do? Are we just going to go ahead and have a blank check for five years? Or isn't it time now to see with $1.2 million in increases that we can do something different? I hope so. So has anything been done is my question. And the second thing that I found is in the 2012, 2013 wastewater refunding revenue bonds, on page 27, there are five years of write-offs on sewer. In 2008, 52,461. 2009, there was 62,534. 2010, 11, 12. I know I have a few seconds left here, but that five-year total is $308,000 that was written off. Now, surely there's a way to recapture that money in the future. You know, if we wrote it off, it's gone. But if you require the property owner to put the deposit up for the sewer, if the tenant leaves, the property owner still has to pay. So I hope that we start looking at other ways that, the money's there. As an inspector, I know how it works. There's lots of ways to save money. We just need to change the way we do business, business in San Bruno and I'm hoping that you change the council members and I, I want to be up on that podium. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. You raised some points and we'll have staff get some answers back to you.
Perry Peterson, Senior Court. Like to remind the audience here and the audience at home that San Bruno has been fined in the past on the subject of water and sewer, the condition of the facilities and the need for improvements and maintenance. And I can compliment the council as a whole for facing up to the unpopular idea of raising rates to do some of these capital improvement and maintenance projects. I think they're appropriate. I think most of the city believes they're appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Kathy De Renzi. I live on Clermont Drive and I live in the area that had the PG&E explosion and fire and I just wanted to come here tonight to let everybody know that we're not fine. It's not going well there. Our neighborhood is a nuisance, continues every day to be a nuisance. Just this afternoon, I was in my yard and you just hear banging. I know, I know they're putting a new sewer in, which brings me to my next subject. We are getting a new sewer installed in our neighborhood because of the destruction in our neighborhood from the explosion and as I understand it, the sewer is being put in by the PG&E money that was assigned to our, or designated to be used in our neighborhood to fix it up. As they're putting the sewer in, we found out that we need to, that the residents, most of the residents, if not all, have what's called orangeberg pipe and we're going to have to pay for that pipe if we want to have, I can't think of the name of it, like an outlet to the new sewer.
Cleanout.
Cleanout, to the new sewer. We have to put in, to replace the orangeberg pipe. If we do not replace the orangeberg pipe, apparently the orangeberg pipe is like cardboard and it's just not something that would be advised to keep if you're going to put that in. So I want all residents that need to have that orangeberg pipe replaced, to have the PG&E money that was designated for our neighborhood, to have that replaced as well. And I know some neighbors had to replace their pipes after the explosion because of problems from the explosion. Those people should be reimbursed by the, not by the city, but through the city with the PG&E money. I'm not asking for the city money, I'm asking for the PG&E money.
Kathy, I'm going to interrupt you real quick because we have that item on the agenda and it'll be discussed.
Okay, so I'll say it twice.
In a lot more detail.
I'll, I'll stop on that then. I wasn't sure how, how that was going to work. The other thing is, just in case, when you're talking about that, if you bring up the fact that after the explosion happened, PG&E offered residents $10,000, I believe it's just an average of $10,000 in beautification money. That money was self-serving. They wanted us to fix the neighborhood up, to make it look good. People did driveways. I actually had to have my house painted because I had to fight my insurance company and they wouldn't pay for it. So things are not, I mean, it's been almost three years and I know that the city got 70 million and I'm happy. I know a lot of the residents did settle with PG&E, I'm happy, but a lot of us haven't, haven't heard anything. So it's not okay. The other question I had is what is going on up on Skyline Drive between Sneed and College? It looks like they're drilling in the ground and I'm just thinking, is that 132 going over there? The other thing is, I know I'm not alone, but... The other thing is, I know I'm not alone, but we've had a lot of airplanes going over our neighborhood, off course. About a week and a half ago, I got woken up at 11:30 at night, it, I actually hit the floor. I thought it was coming into my house. So I called the airport, and I found out the next day that it was in Philippine Airlines off course, right over our neighborhood. And I don't know if the city can do anything about that. I've filed complaints, and a lot of my neighbors have. So, low and very loud, and I don't miss a plane, I don't think, since that explosion. I hear everyone. Anyway, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We'll get some answers for you. I noticed also that the issue with Sneed Lane, between Sneed Lane and Skyline. City manager?
So I can respond to that right away. That may be a topic of interest to other residents of San Bruno. Caltrans, who has jurisdiction of State Highway 35, which is Skyline Boulevard, is completing a slope repair stabilization project on the west side of Skyline Boulevard between Sneed and College. Is that correct? Our current understanding from communication with Caltrans is that that project is scheduled to be completed roughly the middle of October. So far as I know, PG&E has no relationship or involvement in that project, except perhaps in terms of advising about utility line locations for a project that is being completed by and for the benefit of Caltrans.
Okay. All right, thank you.
To the chair.
Ken?
Just for information for Ms. Di Renzi, I'm the representative on the Airport Roundtable, representing San Bruno. So if you are experiencing, is anyone experiencing any unusual aircraft activity, meaning additional noise or different patterns or whatever, contact me, and we will together try to find out what's going on. I don't want to downplay in a unique occurrence of a, of a plane that got off course or something. I'm sure SFO is very, very clear as to what happened, and they'll be able to give you-
Yeah, they don't know. He's trying to find out.
Yeah.
He's just asked the pilot, and I don't know where the pilot went, but he's not getting any answers.
That's, that's a very unusual, I mean, Philippine Airlines is, I mean, I hate to say it, but Philippine Airlines is a violator, a constant violator, as far as noise is concerned, as far as when they take off, and, you know, and the, and the routes that they take on the, on the designated routes.
Do you have any rights as, like, I mean, I could have had a heart attack.
The, I'm just saying, I could talk to you after, but the, the Roundtable is a cooperative. We try to cooperate with the, with the, with the airport and with the FAA. We cannot tell the pilots to do certain things, and we cannot demand that SFO do certain things. All we can do is collectively try to cooperate and also pass on the concerns of the residents that are affected by the airport and the other airports.
I know they got a lot of reports on that one, for sure.
Okay, we'll, we'll get some answers for you.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else on public comment?
How's it going? I'm Andrew T. Mason. I'm running for city council, San Bruno.
Tell us your street, Andrew.
Thanks. Billiards is a sport, by the way, just want to, for the record.
Tell us your street, Andrew.
Pardon?
Tell us your street.
Oh, I live on 416 Cherry.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm running on three basic, three main points. I want to run a really polite campaign based on, first off, kind of Marty touched on this a little bit, about fees, about utilities fees. I think there's a lot of elderly people in this community. They paid into the system, they pay taxes, and they deserve respect. And if we keep raising fees, it's just one way to tax the middle class. I don't think it's right, I don't think it's fair. I think we need to cut in other areas. Number two, I'm really passionate, if I'm elected, I will work with the San Bruno School Boards. I've got 13 years in process development, research and development, and validation engineering, and project management in the biotechnology industry. What I've come to find is, in having been able to finally buy a house on the peninsula, I really love this area a lot, but I also think that the schools, especially in this area here in South San Francisco, could really step it up. They can learn from industry, and I think that we should have, not based on a state or federal mandates, I'm talking about local communities. I'm talking about people that live and work in those industries, bring that education back. Have forums, bring, kind of have like a, like a town hall where we talk about science and technology. I think stem cells in particular, people, there's a lot of misinformation out there. I think biotechnology, there's a lot of misinformation. I think clean energy. That's my second point. And my third point, I think, is local job creation. If you look at Oyster Point, 80 years ago, it was a beef tannery. They used to do beef renderings, it was a heavy polluter. If you look now, we're, we are in a new age. We've got EPA guidelines to attend to, we've got local clean air acts, these are great programs, and we need to train people, local residents, to work in these industries. And Commissioner Salazar, you mentioned about sharing resources. I think that that's, that's the way things are going to be going, is that you can leverage your skill sets. So if you're a mechanic, why not learn how to do, be a driver, or learn how to, to learn the automation side of the way technology is going? Councilman Medina, you talked about police cars. Everything's being automated now, and I think that's really critical, is that we embrace this change, because otherwise, our society and San Bruno residents, we're going to become eclipsed, based on technology. So that's it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else like to address the council? Okay, we'll move right on to conduct of business, item 10A, adopt a resolution approving bylaws for the San Bruno Community Foundation, and provide direction regarding selection process for directors to the board.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we're going to be discussing two topics regarding the San Bruno Community Foundation. The first is a review and approval of the final draft of the bylaws that are included in your packet, and the second is a selection process for the directors to the board of the foundation. Let's do a quick review. The city council has held a total of four public study sessions to discuss the formation of the foundation. In the meantime, the city has been acting as the custodian of the $68,750,000, holding it in a secure account pending the formation of the not-for-profit. The articles of incorporation have been filed with the Secretary of State. That was the first step in forming the nonprofit. Most recently, on July 19, the city council provided direction with respect to the bylaws. That's the second step, and that's one we're going to be addressing tonight. The third step, which we'll also be addressing tonight, is to provide direction on the selection process for appointing the directors to the board. Now, as just a reminder, the foundation itself, while it's been technically formed, can only act through its board of directors. So neither the city nor the foundation at the moment has the authority to spend any of the funds until the board is established and then actually has meetings at which it makes decision about what to do with the, with the funds. There are a great many things that I'm leaving out of the, of the process, of things that the board is going to have to do, but that's just a brief overview of where we are right now. So let's take a minute and discuss the bylaws that you have in your packet. There is a revised version in there, which incorporated all of the direction from your last meeting. It's been reviewed by our outside attorney, Britt Strothman, who was here at the last study session, as well as the representative from the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Mary Ellen Loyens, and they, they didn't have any additional comments. To summarize, there are really four key things that we included in the minutes that are in front of you that came out of the study session. The first is that there's a provision that says city council members would not be on the board of directors. We'll come back to that in a second. The second was expressing a preference for certain expertise among board members, so that's included, legal, financial, philanthropic, investment, the finance, those kinds of things. We also included the stagger terms in the bylaws themselves. They didn't have to be there, but we thought it would make sense to do that. And then we retained all of the broad reserved powers at the end of the agreement, so that way the city council can make sure that what the board of directors is doing is consistent with the needs of the community. Let's go back for just a second and flag that, that key issue. I think we, we should confess that staff wasn't 100% sure that what the city council meant was, we want to prohibit city council members from being on the board, as opposed to simply not requiring them to be on the board, as the bylaws were previously drawn. So right now, what the, what the bylaws say is that no city council member is on the board of directors, so there's a prohibition on that, as opposed to simply taking out the part that said they're required to be on the board, or they have one seat or two seats, and that, that kind of thing. So, subject to any discussion about those items, we're recommending approval of the minutes that you have in front of you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that at the end of my short presentation.
Any questions for our city attorney? Michael?
To the chair, thank you. So, on the point about the prohibition on the council members, I think, at least my intent was not to prevent city council members from being board members, but rather simply removing the requirement that city council members be directors. So that was my take on it. I don't know what, I think there were some council members that felt the opposite, that there was a strong need to have council members on there. So maybe removing that statement might get us to more of a middle ground there. I also had questions about, something that I found a little bit interesting is that there are references in here to the Brown Act and conducting meetings according to the Brown Act, as well as some language that sounds like it comes from a corporate charter, along with indemnification of, of the directors and staff from, from any legal action. And so I'm wondering, is there any conflict there? If, if directors were in violation of the Brown Act, would the foundation be responsible for any fees that were assessed on it, or any fines that were assessed because of that?
You're, you're asking an excellent question. We'll, we'll take the second part first, which is a question that unfortunately is one that we're going to have to figure out if, if and when it, it happens, because these bylaws are a marriage of the laws regarding public entity and nonprofit corporations. And while there are lots of nonprofits, and there are lots of public entities, and lots of public entities that form nonprofits, this is a rather unusual set of circumstances. So it's hard for, for us to determine hypothetically, well, what if this happens, would, would the foundation have to do this or that? That would ultimately be a matter for the board of the foundation to decide, based on legal advice that it gets from its own independent legal advisor. So I, I don't want to avoid answering the question, which it probably sounds like I'm doing, but I think it's important to understand that these questions have lots of fact-specific things about them that are just impossible to answer in the abstract.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so I guess there's a little bit of a gray area there that-
There's, there's always a gray area.
Right. The, the other thing I wanted to just clarify is that on the final page, it says approval of incurrence of indebtedness, but there's no amount, so I guess we need to figure out what that, what amount's going to be filled in there before we approve these. Are there any recommendations on what that number should be?
16H.
Yeah, we, we thought about that. You know, it wouldn't be out of the ordinary to say it's the same signature authority, for example, as the city manager has, for example, which I think is $25,000. That, that would certainly be reasonable. If the board ultimately, and in the future, wanted to change that, they could, although it's important to note that once the bylaws are, are set, they're set for quite a long time, because the foundation has to go through the 501(c)(3) approval process with this set of, of bylaws without any changes. But that seemed like a reasonable amount to recommend.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Ken?
To the chair. On the issue of council members, I'm, I was in favor of not having council members on the board. I, I think if there's any discussion on that, it's, it seems like a conflict to have, to be on the board and then being a part of the reserve powers. And, you know, you can't have both sides of the street on that. That's what I, just majority of San Bruno residents, I think that's very clear. The question is, at what point, I mean, there's going to have to be a, you know, we're going to have to be mindful of whether we're going to have five, five board members, seven board members, nine board members, or whatever, and then make sure that we maintain the majority. And with that said, I'm a little concerned about just having directors that have an expertise in being on a board, being on this, in this type of organization. I'm questioning on whether other entities also are made up of just strictly those with expertise in, you know, in nonprofits.
So that's, that's a, that's a good question, if I may just address that issue. The bylaws don't actually require that. What they say is directors should include individuals with particular expertise in areas applicable to the operation, such as, so on and so forth. So it doesn't require you to appoint people that, that have that particular expertise. It's really just a recommendation. If you wanted to, you could require it, but it's not required.
I, I sort of read it, I sort of read it a little stricter than that.
Ah.
Yeah.
Right, they, they don't all have to have that expertise. It's just recommending that some of them do.
It's that directors should include individuals, okay.
Right.
So, and that's fine. I guess, I mean, in, in comment to what Michael said about the, the debt occurrence, the $25,000 seems fine, because we do have, the council does have reserve powers to, to review the budget. And so even if there's expenditures under $25,000, it would be in a, in a particular line item, you know, so it wouldn't come out of the blue. My, my understanding. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else? Irene?
Well, it depends on what, what is said about council people being on the board. As you know from my last discussion, I firmly believe that the city council, whoever it is, are ultimately responsible to the voters. And as our city attorney said, this is a unique board. It's a hybrid between nonprofit organizations and public entities. So to me, the city council is, are the people who are directly responsible to the voters. And if they are not on this board, nobody on that board is going to be directly responsible to the voters. That's one half of it. The other half is, if we keep all those powers that we have, three people on this city council ultimately have the power over everything that board does. So in one way, you're saying hands-off for this council, and on the other hand, you're saying, well, ultimately, three of us are going to decide. So I personally can't vote for the structure of that part of who's going to be on the board. So the rest of it's fine, the $25,000 seems fine. I just like clarification on that, though. My understanding from how the city manager works and other boards that I am on, between board meetings, if a knee comes up, the CEO or general manager or city manager has the authority to write a check up to the $25,000 that is not necessarily in the budget. And is that, am I incorrect on that, if there's an emergency, or if there is something that comes up? I mean, it's not necessarily that, but it could be that.
It, it could be that, but typically, and that is, that would be a very unusual circumstance, the authority of the city managers up to $25,000 is typically exercised for items that are in the budget.
Right.
And that are authorized and expected expenditures. They do not otherwise come to the city council for validation, verification, or action, approval by the city council. So for example, if, and we do have a couple of things in the current year's budget where we have, let's say, a $15,000 expenditure anticipated for a consultant study and report, thinking of a housing nexus study, let's say, for example. That item is in the current year budget, let's say the item is under $25,000, it would be done under my signature authority typically- be done under my signature authority typically, and would not require additional action by the city council to authorize the expenditure. You are correct that, and that's how, that is the typical use of the city manager's expenditure authority. It would be a very unusual situation where, under some, again, unusual emergency set of circumstances, I would have the authority to authorize an expenditure of $25,000 or However, if it's not in the budget, it would still have to come back to the city council at some point to be authorized, because that, the funding would need to be appropriated.
Okay. I think we're saying the same things, I just wanted to be clear for everyone that that is a possibility, however remote.
It is, and it's actually a very, I mean, what I'm describing is a very constrained set of circumstances. In other words, the not-for-profit entity still exercises fairly substantial control, just as the city council exercises total control over the city's budget and its expenditures. It's just the way that the budget would be implemented.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, if I may, through the chair, just to follow up on that, there is a slight nuance that I should point out, which is, what this section here, H, is really referring to, is indebtedness of the corporation, not the signature authority of the executive director, who hasn't actually been hired yet. So presumably, the executive director of the corporation will have a certain signature authority that he or she can expend before, or without getting Board approval, not city council approval, but Board approval. What this is relating to is the indebtedness of the corporation. So if you set this at $25,000, for example, what you're really saying is, the corporation can't spend more than $25,000 without coming to the city council, or without at least getting that approval at some point in the process. So, it's a little different.
Rico, anything?
Yeah, I mean, we've gone over this quite a bit, and I'm still on the same page that I was before, and I do understand that there's a lot of reserves power, and it does go back. To me, I, it's just a philosophical view, it's not because anybody wants to wear more hats, but this is the elected body that is responsible for the overall budget, and any expenditures that come from committee commissions and boards, there is oversight. The need for transparency is great, and I think it's critical. If there's an expenditure clause like what the city manager has, even though it's remote, and it can be expended, then, to me, that is not transparency. I know there's a budget that's going to come up, and so, there's a path that they go on, but then it comes here, as Vice Mayor said, and then three of us say, well, no, go back to the drawing board. So, in the way it's formulated, as far as that, I'm still having a difficulty with that. And again, that's just my philosophy on that. I think there is an election every two years, it's for a majority of the city council, and it sets direction, and it sets guidance. And I think that's the importance of why you need to have that still come back here, because this was money through a settlement that was entrusted to the city to do what is best for the community, which the Board will set that and give that guidance, but I think ultimately, as I'll go back to the example, the Board comes up with a budget, it says this is how we want to spend it, whatever they feel is best. Get 100 people in the room, or 50, and they say, what are you thinking? And we go like this, because we've appointed the people, but yet, then that's it. So, again, it's a unique situation that we're in, so that is my part of the bylaws that I still have the challenge with.
Okay, and I'd like to err on the side of caution, I guess, maybe a little cynical, but believe it or not, I think politics could enter into the fray if council members are on this Board, number one. And number two, I certainly want to segregate the city council from the Board, because I wouldn't want to jeopardize the not-for-profit status going forward. I mean, there's entities in the state that could say, wait a second, you got a Board, but the council's on there, for crying out loud, and they're really running the show, what's going on here? And so, I really have a ten, in the beginning, I thought, it's not too bad to have a couple of council members on there, but we will, in fact, have a tremendous amount of influence with reserve powers, and just the fact that we are the representatives of the people of the City of San Bruno. So, that really, I've thought a lot about it, it'd be nice to be on the Board, all of us, that'd be great, but I wouldn't want to take any chance at all of invalidating the actual not-for-profit entity, and having someone in the state say, you know, you're really not a not-for-profit, you as the city council are running this. And that's particularly set up in the, in the direction of the document itself, says we will set up a not-for-profit for the benefit of all of the people of the City of San Bruno. And believe me, we will, along with all of you that are here and that are listening, you know, direct that, have that input, because it is, in fact, for all of you. So whether it's something to be built, or something to be donated, or something to be granted, they'll have, they'll have plenty of our influence without people being on that Board. I wouldn't want to jeopardize our not-for-profit status there. So, that's my feeling. And as far as the $25,000, I mean, that's fine. I think the main thing tonight is to get this established. The other thing that's in the agenda, too, and I'd like to confirm, in fact, Mr. Salazar and myself were on the initial setting up of some of the wording initially in this, and I'd like to keep the two of us on this as a subcommittee to meet very shortly, because I believe, Mark, this has to be decided upon, and these directors have to be appointed very shortly, to get to this process, and how we're going to put the questionnaires out, solicit people, and their, and their
Right.
Their requirements, and their expertise.
That's correct. I do have a couple of comments about that, but I didn't want to leave the topic of the bylaws until we have at least a majority as to which way it's going to be. And so, I think I've heard two individuals indicate they would want to prohibit council members on the Board, which is what it says now, two would want to require them, and one that I think we still need a firm decision on, do you want it the way it's written in the bylaws, or would you prefer?
Actually, having heard what the mayor had to say, I think I'll withdraw my objection to that language, and agree to leave it in there.
Okay, very good. So, as it stands now, then, the bylaws would be written as is to prohibit city council members on the Board of Directors.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to expand on that before we
Yes, just a couple of brief comments. We, really for the benefit of the public, as you know, the city has maintained a website and an email address to receive information from members of the public who are interested in the foundation. The city's also received expressions of interest from people who would perhaps like to be members of the Board. We think it's appropriate now to renew those outreach efforts to everyone here, and who's listening or watching on television. In the meantime, we recommend that a selection process, application process be developed, with the assistance of staff, a subcommittee to be appointed by the mayor, and then also the experts that we've been using at the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, who have done this before, and there's no need to really reinvent that wheel. They have lots of templates and options that can be used for the selection process. The purpose of the subcommittee, in essence, would be to screen, evaluate candidates, and then recommend, recommend only to the full city council which candidates they would recommend to be on the Board. We would envision the council could then conduct interviews of whoever it wanted, including those who were recommended, and then appoint them. And then, once those folks are selected, we can file the bylaws and some other paperwork that's really important with the Secretary of State. And here is the deadline. The deadline is October 22nd. So, it has to be done fairly quickly, and there's a 90-day deadline from the time that the articles are filed, until this other piece of paper has to be filed with the Secretary of State. So, by that time, the Board and Board officers will need to have been selected, and then listed on that paperwork. So after that, the good news is, there are no other major imminent deadlines, but then the work of the foundation needs to continue, in terms of getting its 501(c)(3) status with both the federal, with the IRS, and with the state. So, there's a lot of work to be done, but right now, I'd like to close simply by indicating that, after having received some direction on the bylaws, we're just looking for some direction in terms of the staff recommendation, to appoint a subcommittee, and then to work with them to move the selection process forward.
Okay, you already have the subcommittee, myself and Mr. Salazar. Right. And then, you're looking to, for us to adopt this resolution this evening?
Sorry, say it again, I'm sorry.
You're looking for us to adopt this resolution this evening?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's the request, is, would someone like to introduce the resolution for adoption?
I'll introduce the resolution for a vote.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
No.
Councilmember Agarad?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Callaghan?
No.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Okay. Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing
Through the chair?
Yes.
I have a question. My unders, could you go over what it is that the subcommittee is doing? And I didn't, I didn't hear us have any discussion about how we are selecting people, how many we're selecting.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, through the chair, if it was unclear, the, it was staff's recommendation that the subcommittee do certain things, it's obviously up to all of you as to what powers to give that subcommittee, and it could include anything from simply developing a selection process, to doing more than that, such as looking at candidates, vetting them, and making recommendations. That's up to you, and I didn't mean to suggest that that was anything other than a staff recommendation.
So, what it is, what is it that we are?
Well, I guess we'll let you know as soon as we meet, we really haven't talked about it yet.
No, I mean, isn't this council going to have input, this whole council?
Absolutely. That would be my intention, and I think I can speak for Michael, yes, absolutely.
Okay, but I thought we would have input about how we're doing the process. Like, I, are you all, are you going to make up a application and put it out? Are you going to?
I think it's premature, but I think the intent would be to sit down with some of the members of, for instance, the Silicon Valley Foundation, to see how they set these things up, some of the qualifications that might be beneficial to this corporation, different things like that, and then come back to the council with the recommendation on how to proceed. The unfortunate thing is, we have to get this done quickly, so it's the process, it's not the selection, it's the process. And then, we'll put it out to whoever'd like to apply, along with, if you have someone you'd like to nominate or recommend, that'd be fine, too. But I think it's up to us to try to set some parameters as to the qualifications of people we would like to see on this Board.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, if the subcommittee, having informed the subcommittee, staff could recommend that we quickly convene a meeting, given the importance and the timeframe we're working under, and bring back at your next meeting, which will be September 10th, give you two weeks to consult with the Silicon Valley Foundation, and anybody else that you might wish, and bring back your preliminary information and investigation, and some recommendations for the city council to consider. That would still give us time, then, to determine how the council would like to proceed.
All right.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the extension of the 2013 San Bruno Park Swimming Pool season through September 29th, 2013.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the city council. The San Bruno Park Swimming Pool operates seasonally from mid-June through the Labor Day weekend. Recently, the city manager received a petition addressed to Mayor Ruane and Councilmember Medina, and signed by 100 Water Aerobics Lap Swim and Recreational Swim Program participants, requesting the city keep the pool open for those programs for the most of the year. In response to the community's request for an extension of this year's season, staff has evaluated the availability of both the pool and the aquatics program staff to support an extended season. Based upon the availability of the current aquatics program staff, there would be sufficient staffing to support the extension of the season only during the late afternoon and evening hours. It would not currently be possible to continue to deliver morning classes. Water aerobics would be offered for one hour, from six to seven, actually, you'll see in front of you, you have the schedule that we're proposing, and so, water aerobics would be offered during the week, Monday through Thursday, from six to seven. Lap swim would be offered 7:15 to 8:30 p.m. And then, on the weekends, water aerobics would be 9:30 to 10:30, and lap swim would be 10:45 to 12:45, rec swim would be from one to four. Those Saturday and Sunday hours are a little bit different, I apologize for the change, but I misspoke. The pool would not be available during the month of October due to the time required to set up the pool locker rooms for the Halloween Haunted Pool event. Additionally, the pool plumbing work is needed to address leaks between the pool and the filtration system. If approved, this fiscal year capital improvement budget, this would, work would be scheduled as soon as reasonably possible to ensure the structural integrity and water efficiency of the pool. Should the city council wish to extend this 2013 pool season, staff recommends extending through Sunday, September 29th. Over the coming months, staff will develop various alternatives for an extended season for the future. These alternatives will be presented to the council for its consideration as part of the fiscal year 2014-15 operating budget review and adoption process. The pool experienced extended seasons in both 2008 and 2010. In 2008, it was a response to another petition brought forward to the, by the water aerobics participants. And in 2008, the water aerobics, lap swim, weekend recreational swim, and swimming lessons were all offered. In 2010, the pool was kept open through a rental to the San Mateo Union High School District for their water polo programs, while their pools were being remodeled. Staff programmed water aerobics and lap swim around the practice times, to take advantage of the pool remaining open and being able to offering, offer the programs to the residents. Both extended seasons were successful, with the water aerobics and lap swim classes filling to almost capacity each session. The cost to keep the pool open through September 29th is estimated at $7,440. The revenue anticipated is $3,876. This represents a 52% rate of recovery for the extended season. The rate of recovery is approximately 80% for a full season, which includes swim lesson and pool rentals. I have, I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Good. Any questions? Ken?
I'm going to be a little facetious. Did all these 100 people sign up, and you have their money?
No, this, we, the lap, oh, okay.
I'm, continuing on, I'm going to challenge this petition, because I don't know who Mayor Russo is, so, but I, now to be serious, the petition did state the PG&E settlement, and I just want to make, on the record, that the funds that we're going to do, you know, to continue the operation of the pool, is not from a PG&E settlement. So, I think it's a good, good idea to extend the program, though.
Thank you.
Through the chair. I know this was brought back up in '08, and I believe Linda may have been one of the persons who brought forward at that time, consideration to have the extension, 210, you, and thank you for bringing up that history. Earlier this year, when I talked about possible enhancements, looking at things as some budget times were a little better, these are the type of things that I was looking at us as a staff, and as a council, to look at. So I appreciate that the residents and/or participants came together. These are the kind of things, again, that I think that offers a good value for the cost, and obviously, there's a need, and it's been proven in '08 and 210, and I think that this could have been a part of this going forward, but I'm in support of that, and I would like to see this go forward.
Anyone else?
I'd move to agree.
Is there a second?
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution. You're going to introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor O'Callaghan?
Hi.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Agarad?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item 10C, receive a report on the results of soil and materials testing of PG&E line 132, and provide direction to staff regarding the filling of line 132 in the Crestmore neighborhood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, and members of the public. I'm Harry Burrows, I'm the city's project manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project. The item before you tonight is a report The item before you tonight is a report on the status of additional testing and analysis that the council requested, both in and around PG&E's line 132, prior to the final abandonment of the remainder of the pipeline, 132, as it runs through the Crestmore neighborhood. The exhibit that's up there shows the alignment for background of the PG&E's line 132 through the Crestmore neighborhood. The sections that are shown in the center of the exhibit there, in orange and in red, are the previous sections that had been filled to date. The sections in yellow are the sections that we're gonna be talking about here tonight. For additional background, in spring of 2012, at the council's direction, we sent a questionnaire to the residents of the Crestmore neighborhood, and that questionnaire essentially posed three different questions as to how to abandon, their preference for abandonment of the pipeline. And those three choices were to leave the pipe as is in the ground empty, to remove the pipe in its entirety from the ground, or to fill the pipe with a cement slurry mixture that hardens into essentially a concrete material. The results of that questionnaire, we received back, I believe, about 70% return from the neighborhood, which was a, a great return, and of that, about 80% of those residents were in favor of filling the pipe with cement slurry. So prior to the final abandonment, PG&E did remove sections of pipeline, line 132, in I believe four different locations, and they were about 20-foot-long sections of pipe. They sent those pipe sections to outside independent third-party laboratories for testing. They did testing of the pipe material itself, the metallurgy, as well as, they took scrapings of the residual material that was inside of, of the pipe, and did testing on those as well. And as a result of the testing that was performed, in August of last year, the city directed PG&E to fill those two center sections of pipe that were on the previous exhibit, a small portion of the 1956 portion of line 132, and the deeper section of 1948 pipe that's in the ground. And the distinction between those two is, the original line 132 through this area was constructed in 1948. In 1956, when the grading for the subdivision occurred, portions of it were relocated and reconstructed, and the deep section that followed the old creek alignment was left and abandoned in the ground. Prior to filling those sections of pipeline, there was liquid that was discovered in the 1948 pipe. We had PG&E perform testing on that, the test came back negative, both on the material within the pipe, as well as the, the pipe itself, and what we're testing for the pipe material was primarily the presence of, of lead, 'cause given that air of steel, sometimes high levels of lead were, were present, but this, this came back negative, so that, that's why those portions were filled with cement slurry at that point in time. As a result of inquiries from both the public, as well as the city council, we received direction to proceed with some additional testing of the soils adjacent to and below the remaining sections, as well as the sections that we filled of, of line 132. Those tests were performed throughout the fall of last year and into the spring of this year, and analysis was done. The test results came back negative in terms of the presence of any hazardous or toxic materials in the soil, and in terms of what was tested for, it was a combination of heavy metals, included mercury and lead, presence of hydrocarbons, the presence of asbestos in the soil, any what are called volatile and non-volatile chemicals and compounds, and these are, I'm not an expert in this, but chemicals such as benzene and chromium, arsenic, PCBs, toluene, xylene, a lot of carcinogenic materials, all of those were tested for, and there was not the presence of any of them within the soils. The test results, PG&E presented the results of all the studies to the State of California DTSC, Department of Toxic and Substance Control. DTSC initially indicated that this was not within their jurisdiction for several different reasons, primarily that, you know, they get involved when there's a spill or release of materials, or there is an active cleanup that's been ordered. None of those are present in, in this instance, so what DTSC said is that they reviewed the protocols and the test results, and they, they thought that, from their standpoint, they were performed adequately, but they were not in position to issue a formal response to that. So then PG&E submitted those same test results to San Mateo County Health Department, and county health reviewed that data, and the analysis performed to date, and they recently submitted a letter to PG&E, which PG&E forwarded to us, which essentially stated that, their opinion, neither the soils nor the pipeline itself contains materials that pose an unacceptable public or environmental health risk. So, we've, we feel confident that, you know, the, both the pipeline itself, what's inside, any residual material that's inside the pipeline, as well as the soils adjacent to the pipeline, have a clean bill of health. In addition, I think it's worth noting that, again, at the request of the city council, based upon input from residents as well, we have undertaken some additional testing on the surface soils, on the vacant lots, even though that's not directly related to the abandonment of line 132, I just wanted to share that information with you. We've not gotten the final report back from the consultant, but the initial reports back from the laboratory are, again, no presence of any hazardous or toxic materials on those empty lots. And that would be consistent with the tests that were done by the county immediately after the, the cleanup of those lots. Why we undertook those tests, that was part of the concerns that were raised last summer based upon the amount of dust that was in the neighborhood, and, you know, whether, whether there was any residual materials within that dust, so, and we're gonna be doing some ongoing testing and monitoring of the dust in the neighborhood as this next phase of construction kicks up. But I'm getting back to line 132, so if, if the council directs us to have PG&E proceed with the slurry filling of the remaining portions of line 132, PG&E has indicated they can start that work as soon as the week of September 23rd. That work's gonna take about four weeks, total duration from beginning to end. They will have two staging areas, one's located up here at the north end of the project on Plymouth, that'll require a closure of that street, except for access for local residents during the timeframe that they're filling there. The other filling location will happen down at the south end on Glenview. That won't require a full closure of the road, that, that road will remain open, the pipeline is off, off to one side. Notification will be provided to all of the residents in advance of this work. Additionally, as before, with the filling of the center sections of pipe, PG&E's contractors will have equipment out there that will monitor the air that's coming out of the pipe, as well as filtering the air through a three-filter system, two liquids and a charcoal filter, before releasing that air into the, into the environment. So any residual smells of recaptant or, or natural gas should not be present when they're doing this work. All of the test results that I spoke about have been posted on the Rebuild Crestmore website to date, and we will be posting additional updates as, as they come in, the final reports on the surface soils, as well as any work related to the schedule of the filling. And lastly, with the previous work, the city did engage the services of a special gas pipeline inspector. The plan is to hire that same inspector to come out and oversee this work when it's occurring as well. So that concludes the status report on the filling of line 132.
Good. Any questions of Harry? Ken?
Harry, in the staff report, one of the tests was air testing regarding hydrocarbons, and it seemed like exceeding, and, you know, so you took measures in that. Can you sort of explain how that will be treated? I, I know you just touched on how you'd have some filtration systems, so that, you know, is, that's being addressed, and there should be no problem? Can you explain on that?
Yeah, so essentially, what will occur is, they will excavate down around the pipeline to these vents that they've installed previously on the pipe. They'll be putting a tent over those excavations, and the tent will have side panels on it as well, so that any vapors that escape from the pipe will be first held within that tent. They have air monitors that they hang in that tent. The workers actually wear essentially, you know, masks to, you know, clean the air that they're breathing. First thing they'll do is monitor if there's a presence of hydrocarbons, then they'll put the mask on. They also have the filtration system, like I described, which is essentially a large hose where they're pumping air out of the excavation and out of the pipe through this three-filtered system.
So, they're not, I mean, we're not talking about acceptable levels, are they? We're, we're talking about cleaning, cleaning through the air so that there are no noticeable bubbles?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did I hear you write PG&E took the samples and had them tested? Or did we hire a third party to test the soil and the air? Or did PG&E take the soil and get it tested? I hope not. I don't trust them.
Well, PG&E hired third-party independent professionals to perform the testing.
Yeah, that's not okay.
We, we had peer review done on the testing and the metallurgy, the metallurgical testing that was done, and our third-party review, our peer review, is confident that the test results, the tests that were performed were per current protocol, and that the results are accurate.
I'm not okay with that. The other thing is, I know after the explosion, some of our neighbors, the soil from their property was brought to Brisbane, they wouldn't touch it, they had to move that soil down to Half Moon Bay because of toxic soil, so...
Well, I would just comment about that, that the work that was done to demolish the fire-destroyed properties was done by the County of San Mateo, and the County of San Mateo oversaw the disposal and, and the, and the removal and the disposal of the materials they have certified to us, and have the expertise to do so, that the remainder of those sites was fully within standards, and that the remaining soil after the demolition and was, in, in fact, safe for human occupancy. So, the, the information that is being provided was, we don't have the jurisdiction or the authority to identify how that was done, or, or whether that was done in a proper manner. We are relying on the County of San Mateo who did that work.
Right, and that brings up another item, is the County of San Mateo, I think his name was Dean Peterson, they initially tested our air, and then he came back and said that they don't have the proper equipment to test the air quality. So, it's not comfortable to me. It's not okay. So I, I wish somebody was looking out for us better.
I, I can address that. So, last, I believe it was either October, November, council approved a contract with a company called Acumen Industrial Hygiene, and they are the company that, one of their subconsultants, they're a contract directly to the city, did this independent testing of the soils on the lots. Also, they're under contract to test the air for both dust, as well as air quality. We have held them off starting that work until construction started again, because that's when our dust occurs, is during the construction season, so they've just initiated that. So we will be performing that air quality testing here in the next several months. The residents will see some equipment out on some of the lots, they're called snorkels, that we gathering dust samples, as well as testing the air.
Okay, so Harry, just so we get it clear, you said that PG&E hired an independent laboratory to verify certain things, it came back clear, then we hired someone to verify what they verified?
We utilized our existing consultants, yes, to do a peer review.
Which was a separate group?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, so it's, okay. No, we're talking, talking about the pipe?
We're, yeah, the, the soils testing.
Soils testing.
And the metallurgical testing.
And the metallurgical, right, okay. But it's ongoing as far as the, the rest of the things that are gonna occur, because construction is taking place in Phase 3?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Ken?
I, we, we have someone who's obviously speaking for the neighborhood, we have residents who are definitely looking concerned here, I'm, I'd like to know, maybe to hear from them, what, what more we should do, or what, what they feel we should do, or what they're not satisfied with. Mr. Renzi gets up there and says, "I'm not with, you know, I'm, I'm not happy with it." What is gonna be happy? I mean, I don't want, we feel that we're, you know, we're trusting staff, that we're going through the proper channels and doing the proper things. You're contradicting it, or there's some contradiction to some of the findings. I don't feel comfortable going forward until everyone is satisfied with the process that we're going through. I, I don't wanna question what we're going through, but if there's, if, as a resident that's experiencing what's going on there, tell us. What more do you need, or what more do you need to, you know, as proof, assurances, you know, that we are going in the right direction?
Betty Coons, Claremont Drive. I'm satisfied with what they've done as far as the testing. Now, maybe I'm different, because I live at the end of the pipeline. It comes right in front of my house and turns and goes out to Sneeve Lane. So I want the pipeline filled. I've been waiting for almost three years. How much longer should I wait?
Hopefully, September 23rd, but, but, no, they, and we're really, really trying very hard, I met with Harry many, numerous times regarding this situation. The question came up about the older pipe, the question came up about the contents of the older pipe, and it needs to be tested, the residual, if there is any in line 132, needs to be tested, and, you know, that was never addressed really in the very beginning. A lot of people didn't even know there was another pipe there from the 40s. So I think we've really gone as far as we really can from independent, we can get more labs out there, and they're probably gonna verify the same thing. PG&E didn't get up there with their crew and test the pipe and say, "This is okay." They hired a totally independent consultant, and we hired a totally independent consultant to check their independent consultant. So, I mean, I'm confident that, that we've gone the distance on this, and my feeling is, let's just get this thing filled and get it behind us. That's me. Anybody else?
Through the chair.
Michael?
I have one question, I'm, I'm curious about the comment that was made about the, the debris was taken to Brisbane, and it was rejected from there. Do we have any information on why it was rejected? Was it, were they speculating that it wasn't acceptable, or was there something they found specifically that was an issue?
I can tell you, but I really don't make that much of a difference. There was-
We, you're on, we need to have you speak. And my understanding was, a lot of that was the initial debris from fire, ash, lead paint, those types of things, it had to be brought to certain types of landfills, so...
Hi, Tina Pellegrini, 1701 Claremont Drive. What we found out is, when we went to take the dirt from our property to Brisbane, the list that we were given did not contain certain chemicals that were tested for that Brisbane required a very clean soil. So yes, we did have to ship it all the way to Ox Mountain, which was, you know, a lot more money, a lot more time, a lot more cost to us. So- So, that's when, you know, they're saying now they're testing the soil and they're finding all these other little things are not in there, like arsenic and asbestos and things like that. It's, would have been nice if they would have done that in the beginning and we got a complete clean sheet because then it would have saved, you know, us a good chunk of money when we were rebuilding as far as getting rid of the additional soil. So, that's all I can, can contribute on that.
All right, thank you.
Just one more thing. It took the neighbor, the residents to call when they opened up the 48 pipe. The whole neighborhood smelled like gas, again. So, it took neighbors calling to get PG&E to come out and put the tents up and the air ventilators and everything. It's been three years, I'm sure we breathed in the bad air and had the chemicals and filled the pipe, I mean, just fill it, it's too late now. Three years ago, we should have had the, we thought the county was checking the soil and the air and then we find out they didn't have the proper equipment. Fill the pipe.
Michael?
I agree, let's fill it.
Okay, Irene?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes, let's fill the pipe.
All right, fill the pipe. Uh, nope.
No, just directions.
Item 10D, adopt a resolution approving a sanitary sewer lateral replacement program in the Cressmore neighborhood.
Okay, the item before you here tonight is a proposed sanitary sewer replacement program in the Cressmore neighborhood. The, the, the situation up in the Cressmore neighborhood is variable across the whole neighborhood in terms of where the sewer laterals fall on certain residential lots and I'll get into that in a little bit of detail. But we, we believe that the program that we're presenting here tonight is a positive solution to some of those challenges related to the sewers in the neighborhood. And what I wanted to do was quickly just give an overview of the program and then talk a little bit of detail related to some of the existing conditions up in the neighborhood. So, a, as an overview, the proposed sanitary sewer replacement program, we think will help maintain the integrity of the public sewer system. It'll help eradicate some of the private orangeberg sewer laterals that you heard about earlier by encouraging their replacement. It'll help address issues related to the settlement agreement that the city entered into with the Regional Water Quality Control Board as a result of the Baykeeper lawsuit in 2010. It's consistent with existing private lateral replacement program already in the city and it provides benefit to residents to the maximum extent possible without using the PG&E trust funds for improvements on private property. And with the exception of incidental installation of sewer cleanouts that has, that have been performed to date and so some of the lots, particularly in Phase Two of, of the project that was recently completed, as well as a payment of some permit fees for the homes that have been rebuilt, no trust monies to date have been used for private improvements. This program, we think, provides public benefit by reducing potential of sanitary sewer overflows, infiltration and inflow caused by faulty laterals into the public sewer system. So, what I wanted to do is take a second and talk about the existing conditions that are up, up in the neighborhood. This exhibit shows a typical home in the neighborhood. The sewer main out on the street and the sewer lateral. This shows a cleanout here right inside the property line. The cleanouts are and have been installed in some locations in the neighborhood, but a majority of residents do not have cleanouts, sewer cleanouts. And why that is worth pointing out is a couple of reasons. The, the sewer lateral really has two components, the upper lateral, which is the lateral within the private property, and then the lower lateral, which is the lateral, portion of the lateral within the public street. If there is no cleanout installed on a property, per the city's ordinance, the resident has the maintenance responsibility for that sewer lateral from their home to the sewer main. If there is a cleanout installed, the sewer, the city takes over the maintenance responsibility from the cleanout to the sewer main with, with essentially the maintenance responsibility of the lower lateral. This is a slightly different view of the same thing. What, what you see here is meant to show what we think is the existing conditions based upon the work that we've done in Phase Two as well as discussion with many of the residents in the neighborhood. So, what we have is originally when the subdivision was constructed, the original developer put the streets in, he put a clay sewer pipe, sewer main in the road and then he stubbed a clay sewer lateral up to the property line, okay? They go in, they put the streets in, put the utilities in, and then they have vacant lots, finished lots, and then the builders come back and build the homes. So, when the builders built the homes, they constructed the house and then they, out of the house was a cast iron pipe. Typically, there's a cleanout at the house and then they use this orangeberg material for the sewer lateral itself from the home to the clay pipe essentially just inside the property line. In most locations, the original builder, it looks like, did not install cleanouts. There is a connection there, but it's in 99% of the cases, it's buried underground. It's, it's more a T-connection than a cleanout. What has occurred over the years is people as, as they have replaced their upper lateral, have installed cleanouts in some instances, as well as people that have undertaken some of the beautification projects that was referred to earlier, replacing their driveways. They, they took that opportunity to replace their orangeberg laterals as well. We don't know this as a fact, but we're fairly certain based upon what we've encountered and the discussions with the folks in the neighborhood that all of the homes up there are, their laterals are orangeberg, given the vintage of this construction as well as the experience of, of the residents. We have done a great deal of outreach to the neighborhood to date. This drawing that's shown up here, it's not meant for you to glean any detail off of. This is our working drawing that shows our tally of what the existing conditions are up there. And essentially what we're looking at is which homes we have verified that have orangeberg pipe. Those are the ones that are shaded orange, you probably can't see that color too well on, on this drawing. The other differentiation there is which properties have the sewer laterals going through lawns or turf areas? Which sewer laterals fall within driveways? Of the ones that fall within driveways, which driveways are decorative paving or paver blocks? Which ones are concrete? Which ones are old concrete versus, you know, newer, replaced concrete driveways? And, and where that becomes important is when we talk about installing cleanouts on the property, we, as part of this project, will install the cleanout on the property, within the property and do a small amount of surface restoration. When I say surface restoration, we have to excavate out the driveway, put in the new cleanout and then return the surface to it as close to its original condition as possible. If that surface is decorative paving or paver blocks or, you know, stamped concrete, it's a little hard for us to restore that back to its original condition. In, in, in that instance, we're giving the property owner the option of not having a, a cleanout installed. We, we do not have to install cleanouts. Let, let me take a step back and talk about a typical sewer replacement project within the city. And Mastic Avenue project was one that, is a fairly recent one that, that the council may remember. So, what, what happens on a typical sewer replacement project is the city comes in and going back to this exhibit, the city comes in and replaces the sewer main and the lower lateral. And at, at that point, they make the connection to the existing sewer lateral, the existing upper lateral. Now, as long as the pipe is in good condition that they're hooking up to, that we're hooking up to, we, we can make that connection. Typically, the cost of a cleanout is, as well as the cost of TV-ing the upper lateral to ascertain its condition, that is a responsibility of the property owner because it's all on private property. So, on a typical project, if the owner wants a cleanout and wants to see the condition of their upper lateral, that's a responsibility that they bear. For this project, as we did on Phase Two and we're, we're doing on Phase Three, we're going above and beyond that and when we, when our contractor installs, excavates out this lower lateral, gets up to the property line, he is TV-ing up the private lateral to ascertain its condition. So, we have, we will be getting and have those results of, of the TV once, once they get to the lateral. We're also offering the property owner the option of us, with our contract, installing the cleanout. Again, it's typically done, it's typically a responsibility of the property owner not paid for by the city. So, those, those are two things that we did on Phase Two and will be doing on Phase Three. This current project is again, offering the cleanout and TV-ing the upper lateral. Again, the advantage of the property owner electing to have the cleanout installed is it relieves them of the maintenance responsibility for that lower lateral from the cleanout to the main. The disadvantage for some property owners may be what I referred to earlier, which is the surface restoration. If a property owner, like in this example, if that driveway is decorative paving, okay? We're going to go in, excavate out around where the cleanout goes and install the cleanout. We're going to replace a six-foot by six-foot section of the driveway. It's awful difficult for us to match that existing material, particularly if it is a fancy surface. So, in, in that instance, as we encountered on Phase Two, many residents elected to not have the cleanout installed. Again, it's, it's not a requirement. The, the other thing that I wanted to talk about was a little bit of misinformation that I, I think got out into the neighborhood unfortunately. And that is that if there is orangeberg pipe on the upper lateral, it doesn't mean that we cannot connect to it. We can connect to orangeberg pipe. It's, as long as it's in good shape and functioning, there, there's no reason why we can't connect to it. What we, what we do want to make sure that the residents understand is that orangeberg pipe is a material that's no longer used. It is subject to degradation over the years and if you're not having a problem with it now, you may in the future. So, it's a good opportunity with this project for the resident to take advantage of potentially replacing that upper, upper lateral if it is orangeberg. And then quickly, just to summarize the status or the, the remaining sanitary sewer laterals within the neighborhood, we replaced, I believe, 93 lower laterals with the Phase Two project. So, that leaves a remainder of 281 laterals. Of those, we've got 15 in Estates Drive. Those, those were constructed in the 1980s, early 1980s. Those, from what we can see, are in good shape, they're not orangeberg pipe. So, those, those upper laterals probably will not, there's no need to replace those. There's 36 homes scattered throughout the neighborhood that have previously replaced orangeberg pipe and installed new cleanouts. There's 15 that have previously installed new cleanouts we have not verified and we won't be able to verify for certain, again, until we TV, get to there to replace the lower lateral and TV whether they replace their lateral. Haven't verified that with, with the property owners yet. We've got 106 that are beneath lawn areas. Again, that, that's simpler in terms of installing the cleanout. We've got the next four categories and they're colored there in orange because, you know, they're the ones that are more, a little bit more concerned. 33 laterals beneath stamped or decorative concrete, 46 laterals beneath concrete and 26 laterals beneath newly installed pavers. And then we've got four laterals that are beneath retaining walls. So, that's, that's just meant to sort of illustrate, you know, the, the existing conditions. So, and that brings us to the proposed sewer lateral replacement program. So, this is consistent with the existing sewer replacement program that I believe the city has in the Rollingwood Basin that was a result of the, the settlement with, with Baykeeper and the negotiations with the regional board. And that is to replace or to pay for up to one-half the cost of the lateral replacement for a maximum of $1,700 for the placement of the upper private laterals. The typical replacement costs in the neighborhood that we've seen, they range from $5,000 to $10,000, okay? So, in most instances, the $1,700 probably won't cover half the, the cost. The $5,000 to $10,000, it's a large gap, it's, it's a big variable. A lot of it depends on what surface you're having to replace when you replace that lateral. The other option for actually open-cutting the sewer lateral is to do pipe bursting and a lot of plumbers will do pipe bursting. Again, pipe bursting has some, some drawbacks, potential drawbacks, particularly where the pipe is shallow as it approaches the house. But even if you do the pipe bursting, you still have to excavate a area around the connection to the house as well as the area around the cleanout where you, where you make the connection to the, to the lateral that we are replacing. What we're proposing with this program is that it be retroactive to anyone who has replaced their orangeberg laterals since the explosion in 2010 and then it remain in place ongoing until the completion of our restoration work within the neighborhood, which is currently estimated about January of 2015. Ideally, as we go through and put the sewer laterals in with this current project, that would be the opportune time for people to take advantage of the program and replace their orangeberg lateral if they wish to do so. The other thing is we're recommending that the work be performed by private contractors and plumbers and that's for a couple of different reasons. One is, we've got a public contract for all the work within the public right-of-way. It's not a good idea to have our contractor do work on private property, particularly as part of our public contract. I know in the past, I think the city has offered the city's contractor contract independently and separately with a property owner to replace their upper lateral. Our contractor, JMB, who is on this project, has indicated that they would prefer not to do that, that they would just like to keep the work within the public right-of-way. So, that's a, a sort of, believe it or not, very quick overview of the situation up there. Be happy to answer any questions if the council has.
Questions of Harry, Ken?
Here's first the easy one. Typically, how, how much of a right-of-way goes into the property from, say, the sidewalk? Is it about five feet or more?
Up in this neighborhood, from the back of sidewalk to the property line varies from the narrow streets, three and a half feet to four and a half feet for the wider streets.
So, that... So, you eliminate that three and a half to four and a half feet and then you place a cleanout?
That is correct.
Okay. And then my $60,000 question is, what would be, has there been an estimate as to replacing, using the trust to replace all the, all the, all the laterals?
We provided an estimate in the staff report. If every potential home took advantage of this proposed $1,700 program, it'd be a little over half a million dollars. So, if, and that's at $1,700, I mean, if you essentially triple that, you know, to get to your average price of a lateral, you know, you're probably looking at one and a half million dollars.
The, the reason why I bring this up and this is sort of food for thought is that we did originally look into the idea of undergrounding utilities and that would have been a lot more considerable as far as being on private property. So, that takes me into, you made... So, that takes me into, you made a statement saying that we don't, we have not gone onto private property, use the money, use the trust money on private property. So, I'm, I'm trying to get a better grasp on why that's significant and why, in this unique case, in this, you know, situation, why we're trying to avoid that. And I guess I'm gonna, and while you're still, I'm gonna, you know, the elephant's sitting in the room. There's money in the trust, and for everyone's knowledge, that money is there to restore that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And so, if there is money, I mean, it can't be spent on anywhere else. And so, if there's a, like, a longer-term usage of that money, then I can say, okay, well, then maybe we oughta hold back on some and, you know, and use it for, you know, for other projects. But I hate to think that we end up with, you know, an excess amount of trust money that could've been used on private property.
So, Harry's presentation described the various conditions on private properties within the neighborhood. And as I think he articulated and laid out, there is a variety of different circumstances and a variety of different costs. Just trying to do a little bit of mental calculation, when he indicated earlier roughly three times the seventeen-hundred dollars, or three, that would essentially cover, on average, a third of the cost. I'm not sure that we've done the math here, but we, I, I think you could quickly evaluate that that would, that would, that calculation would get you at roughly five-thousand dollars, which would be at the low end of the range for some of those private properties where extensive front yard improvements and particularly concrete or paving improvements have been made. The city would, if it, depending on how you would like to structure a program, if you were going to do that, I would strongly recommend that it not be done by the city because you run into all sorts of different issues associated with work on private property. Even doing it by reimbursement basis, you end up with a, a pretty, pretty differential level, a pretty different level of participation that you would be providing to individual property owners, depending on choices that they made utilizing, in many cases, funds that were provided previously by PG&E. So, in any case, we have, we, staff's recommendation was intended to provide a rec, a program that would provide a level amount of benefit, that would provide an opportunity for residents in this neighborhood to receive a significant benefit of the installation of the cleanout, and then to work with property owners to, again, to try and improve their situation based on their individual choices. Council certainly reserves the right to amend or to take the recommendation or not take the recommendation. We see a great deal of complexity in trying to deal with the variety of different situations that, and that was the primary reason for the recommendation. I'm gonna add one more thing, and I, I hesitated to say this before, but Harry is encouraging me to say it. And that is that the fifty-million-dollar trust fund was negotiated specifically for the city's costs associated with public improvements in the neighborhood and the rebuild of the public infrastructure. It is the city council's general direction to staff that we want to assure that the maximum level of infrastructure rehabilitation is provided as a result of the circumstances that occurred in this neighborhood. And it is with that direction that we've pursued now into the third phase of the rebuild of all of the public infrastructure, sewer, streets, stormwater, water, throughout the entire neighborhood. There is no specific provision in the trust arrangement that work on private property would be contemplated. Now, there's an argument that as part of the trust fund's utilization, there would be, we, we would need to evaluate with the trustee and with the program defined by the city council and, and to identify what the, essentially the thought process behind that program would be. And again, seventeen-hundred dollars, as Harry, I think, thoughtfully articulated, provides a program that is consistent with something that's been done elsewhere in the city. That may or may not be the right number that the city council might wish to include in this particular program and with the use of the trust funds.
Okay. First of all, I don't want to jeopardize the, you know, the use of the trust fund. I don't want, you know, if it's, you know, obviously, you're gonna have to clarify that if, in fact, the council gives direction to go onto private property. When you outline a program that we know is going to cost five to ten-thousand dollars and you're going to reimburse seventeen-hundred dollars because it is a typical program, this is not a typical program. This is not a typical neighborhood. This is, this neighborhood did not ask to have the infrastructure replaced. And as much as they will probably, in the long term, appreciate the infrastructure being replaced, I don't think they anticipated five to ten-thousand dollars and up as far as restoration, you know, to, to continue on living in this neighborhood, albeit it will be probably the safest neighborhood in San Bruno, if not in San Mateo County. But I just think with the money that we have and the money that is tagged for the neighborhood, that we should give them as much as we can on a average basis, because there are gonna be some cases where, you know, it's, it's gonna exceed that. But I, I think we need to give them more than seventeen-hundred dollars. And I throw that out to my colleagues.
All right. I'll catch it. I guess the, you know, we're trying to be fair here and trying to live within the agreement, but I guess the bottom line is, if the explosion didn't occur, we wouldn't be having this discussion. And so, you know, my feeling is that, you know, you, you can't just go five or ten-thousand bucks a property, but I think it has to be significantly more than seventeen-hundred dollars for those that really wanna participate in this. I think Harry mentioned the fact that they don't have to put the cleanout if they don't want to. But if you do, I would like the city, the city manager and staff to look to the trustee and maybe, Pete, you need to see the parameters of what we might be able to use this for. As I said, we want, if it wasn't for the explosion, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight.
Through the chair. I was gonna say, on the seventeen-hundred, I know that was probably by on staff's part, just to say, okay, we already have a precedent. We have something established, so let's piggyback off that. And honestly, when you get to the five or ten-thousand, seventeen-hundred, I guess to the ten-thousand, which is easy enough, depending upon what type of excavation, how long the install's gonna be, and et cetera, and the backfill and concrete, if that's necessary. There's also the permits, so I didn't know if that was gonna be something that was also on the homeowner to have to get, or if that was something the city would provide in addition to the cleanout and the video. It's already been echoed, but I think seventeen-hundred dollars is not a lot. And let me tell you, it takes, it's very quick when you start talking about labor. And by the time you excavate and install and backfill and all that stuff, it adds up quickly, especially if there's concrete involved. So, I think I would suggest that we go back and we look at something that's correct and right for this area and for the situation. I know we already had a program in place, but again, enough of us been through the situation. We know what they've had to deal with, and we're still trying to get it all back together. And so, I think how we can assist in trying to get that taken care of does two things. It, excuse me, it helps us with SSOs, it helps us in other ways. And I know the Orangeburg too, if, in other cities, when they video it, if there's a crack or there's a lump, the whole thing has to be replaced. There's no ends of surbuts. I know in a city to the north, they offer twenty-five-hundred, and a city to the south, they offer five-thousand through their sewer lateral program. So, and this is something as far as when it comes to the selling of the homes, you know? So, if we do do the videoing, I'd like to see a DVD produced. I'd like to see it given to the homeowners so that they can have that as a useful tool if they're asked to produce that as far as through the period of time that's allowed to keep that valid if they should sell or if they wanted to utilize that for them, since we're doing that. I think that's some, another thing we could do. And then again, the permits were the other question.
Permits, Harry?
In terms of the permits for the lateral replacement itself, I don't think we've had that level of discussion at, at the staff level, but...
We, we wouldn't expect to charge permit fees. There are permit fees associated with that type of work typically, but that would certainly be something that, for a program like this, we would, we would, consistent with the council's previous action to waive permit fees associated with the rebuilding of the homes, I would certainly see that as being an, a, a clear opportunity to benefit homeowners.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, 'cause you're gonna build, you have encroachment, so those add up too, and then having to go down and take care of that. So, I think if we've been, that we can already say, we have been consistent in that, so we should continue that and help the, the area save on that as well.
Irene?
I have a couple of questions and concerns. I, I too think seventeen-hundred dollars is kind of a very small drop in a very big bucket, so I, I would like us to think of how we can increase that without jeopardizing the trust. But also, what is the timeline for this? If we delay this too much longer, is it going to jeopardize people's ability to, to have as, you know, their laterals done simultaneously with the contractor that we're having now?
Yeah, I was just consulting with Harry about that because my, my thought at this point would be to, we wanted to get this to you as quickly as possible, partly because this has been a strong issue of interest and concern to the neighborhood, given that we've had a couple of neighborhood meetings, or at least one neighborhood meeting now that we've begun the, as we were beginning, and, and now that we've begun the Phase Three reconstruction project. You have numbers of residents in the audience tonight demonstrating evidence of that concern and interest. At the same time, we wanted to make sure that we could coordinate effectively with the project as our city contractor is moving through the neighborhood so that disruption is, again, contained to the minimum possible. That said, we believe that returning to you on September tenth will not jeopardize those considerations and that we could certainly take the city council's comment, as, as we've heard it so far, into consideration and to bring you back the information that you're discussing and requesting. So, we believe that we could take a little bit more time, although time does remain relatively of the essence, primarily to coordinate with this project and frankly, to put the minds of the residents at ease and not leave this issue lingering out over their heads.
If I may, do we have enough staff? Well, I know the city doesn't have enough staff, but is there enough staffing available to, to do some of the things that you're talking about and kind of capture some of the difficulties and the complexities? If we, if we say pay for everything or pay for half of every, whatever it costs, it's labor-intensive as far as staffing goes. Do we need to staff up for that, or can Harry, do you have somebody who can do it? I don't want us to make a decision and then find out there's nobody to actually carry out the decision.
Yeah, I, I think in terms of the, the staffing to administer this or to manage it, we, we have staff, we have two full-time inspectors, a resident engineer and a full-time inspector out in the field. They're the ones that have been doing a lot of this legwork that produced, you know, both this working drawing as, as well as this summary here. So, I think in terms of managing the program, yes, we, we have adequate staff.
Okay.
Again, depending on the details of the program, if it is like we've recommended here tonight, that we don't have city contractors perform the work, then we're really in a situation where the private property owner performs the work, submits their invoices to us to review to make sure that, you know, everything's above board, and then we work out the reimbursement accordingly.
Okay. I, I agree with you on not having a city contractor get...
Michael? Anything?
Yeah, Harry, so can you kind of elaborate on the level of effort in terms of doing this upper lateral work in conjunction with the lower lateral work that we're already on board? Is there significantly more effort if this is, if, say, that part of the, the work is already done, or if somebody chooses to do it farther down the road?
Yeah, no, that, that's a good question. Ideally, it would, it would occur at the same time, primarily because, again, if we're, if I can find the cursor here, there we go. Primarily, if we're excavating up to the property line to install the lower lateral, we're gonna have a hole right there, especially if they elect to put a cleanout in. So, we're gonna have a hole right there. That's the time for them to either, you know, pipe burst or open cut their lateral back up to the house. That way, we're not digging two holes in the future. Now, is it prohibitive? Absolutely not. What we can do, even if there's, it's a concrete driveway or decorative paving, we can always put a temporary surface down, asphalt. We did that on Phase Two for several of the residents where we excavated up, installed their cleanout, put temporary asphalt down, and then the future came back and did the surface restoration. They could do the same thing, come back, install the upper lateral, and then the surface restoration could occur at the end of the project, or at a future date.
All right. And the, the sort of finishing touches that we've discussed before, where we repave the roadway, fix the sidewalks and everything, wouldn't impact the cleanout because the cleanout would be completely on the private property?
That is correct.
Kathy, did you have a question?
Would it help to get the residents to submit their bids? Because I know we have a network in our neighborhood, and some of the neighbors have, might have a plumbing company, and they have offered discounts to other neighbors. So, would it help if we could get you bids on what it's gonna cost each house? And if you have the addresses, most of them are on the lawn, through the lawn, but we, I mean, if we knew who they were, I could go and let them know that we need an estimate if they wanna get that done. So, just let me know if that'll help.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Michael?
It may actually be useful if we sort of triaged that list. We know that the lawn ones are gonna be fairly easy to do, but if we could get some indication from the homeowners on the remaining properties, if it's something they would even be willing to do, it might make our decision a lot easier if we know what, what exactly we're dealing with.
Yes.
Hi, I'm John McLaughlin. I live on Claremont. And first of all, I wanna applaud you for taking this on because I think it's very important. And our circumstances are a little different. We made a decision when we had the driveway replaced to go ahead and have the Orangeburg scoped and have it replaced. It was a choice of spending a moderate amount of money now or spending a larger, much larger amount of money later. And so, we've made that decision. So, that's kind of water under the bridge for us. I'm really concerned about the, my neighbors in our neighborhood who are going to really feel they've been sucker punched when they get hit with this and the cost, and they're thinking, you know, I never contemplated doing this, and the only reason I'm doing it is somebody blew up our neighborhood. So, I think anything you can do to give them relief would be wonderful. It, you know, Orangeburg, you know, hindsight's wonderful, it probably never should... It, you know, Orangeburg, you know, hindsight's wonderful, it probably never should have been used, it's great for skyscrapers, you go to the Pentagon, it's Orangeburg, you go to the Empire State Building, it's Orangeburg. But under your driveways, like in our particular case, not good. The other thing, the final thing I'd like to mention is you're talking about private contractors doing it. It would be great if some of the local plumbers could get some of this business. There's a lot of good plumbers doing business in San Bruno, many of them live in our city. And each of us that have dealt with them can tell you that this particular plumber did a good job. And we're very happy with the one that did our work. We talked, I talked to other people, they're very happy with the plumber that did their work. It'd be very nice if some of that business could go their way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to segue into what that gentleman just said. I believe if we're, if this council decides to significantly supplement this work, I think within, within the law, I think we should, we should make a concerted effort to qualify contractors. When it gets out that the city may be funding X amount of sewer laterals, they're going to be inundated in that neighborhood. I mean, there's going to be business cards, there's going to be plumbers all over the place. And I believe that we need to be prudent in, you know, minimizing that and hopefully making sure that we do have the type of contractors that the gentleman just stated, you know, local, reputable, proven. And so, my other question was, is there other options that may not have to, you know, that you can say abandon a lateral in order to save the driveway and possibly go into the lawn, you know, with a new lateral? I mean, are there, you know, versus, you know, versus pipe bursting? You can address that.
Yeah, unfortunately, the lateral location is driven by where the plumbing comes out of, the main sewer pipe comes out of the house. So, for example, in this exhibit here, we're assuming that the main sewer connection out of the house, comes out of the house or inside the garage, which is typical of a lot of the homes up there. Some of them might be in the, you know, lower right-hand corner of the house, for example, and it goes through the lawn. Others, it might, you know, come out midway through the house. It varies depending on the house itself.
If we're placing new sewer laterals, lower and up, I mean, if we're placing all new lower laterals, I mean, I know easier said than done, why couldn't we come further down and just go diagonally towards that one point and totally, and try to, you know, minimize the disruption of any structure? You know, we may tear up a whole landscape area, but, I mean, I think if that's an option, the resident can make that determination.
You have direction?
We have good direction, thank you very much. We will return with information to the best of our ability, what we're able to generate by September 10th. We'll be back.
Great, thank you. We're going to take a two-minute break before we do the next item. I'd like the council to return to the dais, please. Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to do the following. Execute a contract with J and B Construction for construction of the College Water Pump Station Number Four project in the amount of $2,449,000 with a construction contingency of $367,350. Execute an amendment to the contract with Brown and Caldwell for design support services during construction in the amount not to exceed $65,549. Execute a contract for construction inspection services with West Yost Associates in an amount not to exceed $169,695. And appropriate an additional $201,864 water capital funds to the project.
Honored and more mayor, council members, the city provides drinking water to city residents through 120 miles of water pipes and also through eight pump stations and eight water tanks. To ensure long-term sustainability of our aging system, our water system master plan developed strategic priorities for the replacement of critical component of the overall system. The pump stations are a critical component of the system, reason why was identified in our master plan, the priority to replace two pump stations. The pump stations, the Maple Pump Station and College Pump Station. Maple Pump Station was replaced in 2009. College Pump Station provides water, feeds water for the northwestern corner of the city, reached its useful life five, 55 years and need a replacement. You can see how the existing pump station looks like at the intersection of Skyline Boulevard and College Drive. In addition to the need of replacement of the pump station, based on the standard change since the 50s and 60s, the capacity of the pump station needs to be increased also to be able to provide with enough flow, including fire flow, to that neighborhood. Also, a other element of challenge for this pump station to be able, is the need to be able to provide with seismic reliability of this station being located very close to a fault. The design was developed, and you can see the proposed design for this new, for this pump station will be relocated, the recommendation is to be, to relocate from the northwest corner of that intersection to the southern west corner of that intersection. And the newly proposed pump station will looks how you see in this picture. Careful consideration to the design also was given, the neighboring, the neighboring environment, including in the design architectural enhancement, how you can see, also proper lighting, building security, sidewalk, landscape around, including sidewalk alongside the new facility. The design was peer reviewed also to make sure that no big surprises will come up during the construction of this project. And the department went out for bid in June of this year. Six bids were received, the lowest bid was J and B Construction. The same contractor is building the Phase Three utility for the Crestmore neighborhood. Also, they are the subcontractor for the Great Separation Project for utilities and also the same contractor built Rollingwood Phase Three for, before, in the city. They met the qualification needed to build the project and the city was pleased with their prior performance. The bid is 2.4 million for the project, slightly lower than the engineering estimate. It's important for, during the construction, the designer, who was Brown and Caldwell, to provide construction support, what the construction support really entail to, they need to, need to approve the submitters, the shop drivings for certain mechanical components or electrical components of the project. Also, any possible change which will come up during the construction, they need to coordinate with us for the solution for those changes. And at the end of the project, they have to provide the city with as-built drivings based on all of the details included in the project during construction. This project is very technical, from a technical point of view, is very complex. Reason why it's important to have a specialized inspection available for the construction of this project to protect the investment for the long-term, for the city. West Yost was selected as the best firm to provide that inspection support during the construction. They were shortlisted among 12 other consultant firms who made proposal to provide construction inspection for the city, but West Yost was deemed the most qualified, having the best understanding and knowledge of our overall water system. The cost of that construction inspection during the construction of the project is With this contract, the total construction cost will be $3.192,000. Our available budget, in our CIP budget, at this present time is $2,990,000. It's a 201,000 funding gap, which is our recommendation to be closed from the Water Enterprise Fund. If you will support the recommendation of staff tonight, then the construction will start in a few weeks. And based on our expectations, the project will be closed out by the end of next year. I have here Will Anderson, the project manager for the project, to help me with all of the answers, and also Mark Ramhart, who is the Water Resource Manager and acting deputy for operation to help with and answer what you might have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Through the chair, thank you. Unless I didn't read it, what's going to happen to the old station?
The old station will be demolished and revegetate at that site.
Okay, as long as that's going to be good. And then, so all the pipes are going to have to go from that station underneath the street?
Correct.
Okay, so all that cost is included in here?
Correct.
Okay, and then, are you, so you build the, just because I'm curious, you build the pipes to the old pipes and then stop everything and reconnect them and... So, you build, you build a new pump station, you build the new pipes under the street to the old pipes, cut off the old pipes and reconnect them to the new pipes?
You are correct again. It's the intent to build a new station and then to, basically to approve the connection to the new station and then to decommission the existing station.
Okay, okay.
Will be, will, to answer your specific concern, will be no disruption to the neighborhood as part of the construction of this pump station.
Right, so the water flow won't?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Ken?
I really like the idea of moving it. I grew up...
I grew up in that area and I, I think it's funny, well, not funny, but it's interesting how we talk about earthquake faults and everything. And here, this little wood structure has withstood everything and has been there for in excess of almost 60 years. I like it there. Can you elaborate as to where in vicinity of the curb it is? I mean, I know there's a lot of space there. I think it's, I think it's good to put it over there, but is it very close to the curb or is there, is there some leeway to, you know, to push it back?
I would like, Will, if you could be, you would answer.
Sure. The site where we are positioning the new station is within city right-of-way and its proximity to the existing curb, you know, we have about a four-foot sidewalk and we have about a two-foot setback to the face of the building. But we are constrained in the rear of the building because of Caltrans right-of-way. So the dimensions, the, I guess, the backside of the building is right up against Caltrans right-of-way, so we squeezed it in there as best we could.
So, so roughly six feet from the curb?
Correct, yeah.
All right.
Anyone else, Michael?
No.
Any action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
And I was just, I used to be the inspector in San Bruno, I worked with Will at the last pump station. And was doing a little, little bit of math on the inspection services and I understand that in the report that current inspectors don't have the full range of technical skills to perform the inspection. I got that. The compaction tests, the rebar inspection, the concrete tests, those are all specialized inspection. However, my question is, at $169,000 for the contract, that comes down to about $142.71 an hour. I'm currently working in Fremont and we're doing a liquid oxygen upgrade to a water treatment plant, 2.3 million dollars. I was tasked to find some subcontractors, inspectors, to do the compaction, to the rebar inspection, to do the concrete inspection. And the cost I got of three firms was around $97 an hour. So the gap, it's kind of, want to know why it's so high. We have a very, very small footprint, so considering 30 weeks of inspection at 40 hours a week, that's pretty much what the budget is. And it's like, the way we did it in Fremont was you bring out your inspector when you need him. We negotiated a two-hour minimum inspection time. So to do the compaction test on that footprint, the inspector would have to come out just a few hours a day as the work was being done. So I think that's a little high and just kind of wondering why. And that's my comment.
Thank you. I know it's a not to exceed, maybe you could address that.
You are correct. It's not to exceed and certainly this, based on our negotiation, we're not required a full-time inspection and based on the need, that's how our agreement with the consultant is. It will not be necessary, that will not be this high.
Thank you.
To the Chair?
Michael?
So the contract is written on an hourly basis with a not to exceed or is it per activity?
Not to exceed.
Right, but how do they bill us?
Is based on, based on hourly, hourly rate, not to exceed.
So there is an hourly rate?
Correct.
Okay. And what is that hourly rate?
And we did specify various tasks that we would like our consultant to perform. So for each task, there is a, an allotment of both hours and, you know, based on the rates, a not to exceed cost for each item we've requested from our construction management consultants.
To the Chair. Okay, I think council member and Mr. Medina was asking, what's the hourly rate? And I know you're saying it depends. So where's the variable? Is it between 90 and 120 based on the task? I think that's the question that I'm hearing.
And I don't remember exactly the hourly rate, but I can provide you the hourly rates. Based on our experience, it's very consistent, the hourly rates between consultants. I just, do you remember the hourly rates for different type of inspection? They have difference rates for depending on what type of inspection. How I indicated, this, they are many type of inspection provided and depending on the type of inspection, they have difference rates.
If I may, I mean, my experiences, I've seen, and I've seen some bids, you know, actually you've included them in, you know, in past projects where the consultant or the contractor provides a, you know, a list of duties and with the corresponding hourly rate. And, you know, it may even be detailed to actual tasks, you know, you know, like three hours or two hours or something at a certain rate, you know, for particular types of duties or particular types of consultants.
And that's how is in this case also, but I, I just, not having the rates in front of me, I am reluctant to give you wrong information. Typically, based on what I saw is that hourly rate is varied, but they are very consistent among defense consultant. I can provide you with specific, with those specific rates. I can forward that information to you tomorrow and if you feel... Okay, I have the rates here, I have the rates is between $118 and $170, depending on the type, depending on the type of inspection provided.
Any questions? Action?
I'd like to introduce the resolution. Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Mayor Mullin?
Aye. Item 10F, adopt a resolution amending to resolution number 2006-75 establishing salary and benefits for the elected city clerk and city treasurer position and adopt a resolution amending the cable television promotional account policy to city clerk and city treasurer positions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the item before you tonight would implement by adoption of two separate resolutions, a program of salary and benefits, changes, amend the existing program of salary and benefits to update it for this elected city clerk and the elected city treasurer positions. I would like to note for the City Council's information that these topics were discussed by a subcommittee consisting of councilmembers Ibera and Salazar prior to the last regular City Council meeting on July 23rd, at which time a oral report and discussion was provided by the City Council, an oral report by staff and the City Council discussion. The report that you have in front of you tonight is staff's attempt to synthesize the discussion by the subcommittee and by the City Council as a recommended program of salary and benefits based, again, on the discussion at those two different meetings. Was brought to my attention earlier today that it may, that because there were, the information came to the City Council after the, close after the, the subcommittee met and was not, was, was then massaged and was discussed further by the City Council, that the discussion and the recommendation that you have in front of you tonight really may not accurately specifically recommend, represent the subcommittee's recommendations. So again, just with that clarification, we've attempted to take the, take the discussion that occurred at those two meetings and bring you back a complete salary and benefits program that we believe represents the City Council's intent as expressed following the subcommittee meeting on July 23rd. So with that, the information that you have in front of you would update two previous actions by the City Council in 2006 and 2009 to address a couple of very specific issues that were discussed by the City Council. The first is that the current salary program for the elected positions provides a four-step salary schedule through which the elected officials progress essentially during their first term in office. The salary program does not currently address any salary increases or any opportunity for salary increases for either an elected city clerk or an elected city treasurer who might be re-elected for a subsequent, a second or third or a fourth term following that first term. So what has happened with the two incumbents, as an example, is that having progressed through the four-step salary schedule in their first term, those individuals have not received a, any consideration or, nor is there any mechanism currently existing for consideration of a salary increase as they have continued into a second and now that they have stood for election and there are no opponents who have filed for election, they had, their reelection for a third term has now been confirmed. This program would provide a regular annual salary increase, which would, for those incumbents, not be retroactive, but that would provide an annual increase at a cost of living adjustment for each year following a first term in office. Now again, these, this program would not be retroactive for those, for the two incumbents currently in office, but would take effect now beginning with the third term, at the beginning of the term would provide a cost of living adjustment at the beginning of the term that will take effect December of 2013 and each year thereafter for the term and any subsequent term. That cost of living adjustment would be calculated by a, by the cost of living index. There are many different indices for cost of living calculation. And staff and the city treasurer were tasked by the subcommittee with providing a recommendation to you about what index to use. We have done so in the report. That index is generally referred to as the CPI-U index for the San Francisco Oakland-San Jose area, urban area. That index is used for other salary calculations typically and is one of the standard indexes for this type of evaluation. The City Council discussion at your July 23rd meeting suggested that there should be a cap on the amount of any cost of living adjustment and the number that was discussed was 2%. So accordingly, the recommendation that you have before you tonight would provide an annual cost of living adjustment beginning with the second and any subsequent term, not retroactive for the two incumbents currently in office. That cost of living adjustment would be calculated by the CPI-U for the San Francisco Oakland-San Jose area. And it would be capped at 2%. So for example, if that CPI index showed a, a increase or change in the cost of living at 2.5%, the incumbents would receive 2%. Similarly, if that index showed for any given year 1.5%, the incumbents would receive 1.5%. So that, in a nutshell, is the change that is recommended for the, for your consideration, again, based on your discussion, for the salary, for amending the existing resolutions to incorporate an opportunity for salary adjustment for incumbents who continued beyond a first term in office. Similarly, the subcommittee considered and the City Council discussed July 23rd, a request by the incumbents for consideration of a benefit that would match that, that, let me back up. The incumbents requested consideration of a personal professional development benefit that is comparable to that, that department heads and mid managers receive. Currently, department heads receive $1,000 per year eligibility for a personal professional development, mid managers receive 500. The elected city clerk and elected city treasurer do not receive that benefit. Many of the individuals who are eligible for that benefit use it for computer purchases or gym memberships for fitness or other similar types of expenditures. The incumbents requested consideration of a comparable type of benefit, but in order to avoid comparing elected officials to appointed officials or appointed staff employees, the subcommittee recommended and the City Council discussed at your July 23rd meeting, a slightly different option, and that was to provide the two incumbents and future elected clerks and treasurers with a benefit that is comparable to one that is received by the City Council, by the other elected officials in our organization, in our cable television system, and that is the ability to receive San Bruno cable internet and some level of television services at a, either a base cost or a reduced cost. So it captured in this resolution is a comparable benefit for, as a recommendation, for the two elected positions of a city clerk and city treasurer. And in order to implement that benefit, should it be the council's desire to approve that, we would be amending our cable television promotional program policy, which is a standalone program separate from the city clerk and city treasurer resolutions, which would be amended for the purposes of salary. So you have two resolutions in front of you tonight that staff believes fully capture the discussion that was held by the subcommittee and by the City Council. Again, this issue is fully your discretion. Staff actually makes no specific recommendation other than to try and capture the information that was previously discussed by the City Council and to present that in the form of recommended program based on your discussion. That I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or action?
To the Chair, thank you. I, I know I've...
I, I know I've said this before, but I'd like to make sure it gets in the record. I am fundamentally and philosophically opposed to any automatic pay raises for elected officials, not because they may or may not deserve it or any of those other reasons, but I, elected officials are just that, they're elected and they, they have no, they not, they not necessarily have any qualifications for the job they are elected to. You know, they're, it's just like any other, it's like the city council, we may or may, you know, some of us are more qualified or less qualified, but we all have the same job, we all have the same responsibilities, et cetera. So I would like, it noted that, that is my position.
Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Michael.
I noticed that in the staff report, it says, there's a line in here that says additionally, the city council reserves the discretion to determine if, in any future year of economic constraint where salary increases for employees are not being provided to, to similarly not grant the annual cost-of-living adjustment to the city clerk and city treasurer. That's not extremely clear, but what it says is that we, the council reserves the right to pretty much cancel the increase in years that are determined to be financial hardship years. However, that statement does not appear anywhere in the, in the resolution. And so if we do go forward with bringing the resolution, I just want to make sure that that particular item is captured in there.
In order to implement that, I would suggest that that be part of any motion to adopt the resolution, that that information be incorporated into the final resolution.
Okay, very good. And I think Councilman Nembora had some questions regarding the index that was being recommended. Do we want to have any discussion around what the inappropriate index is or whether the recommended index is adequate?
I, I was, I received confirmation, I could, that, that the indexes that we use are the indexes that we use for, for the rest, for the rest of the organization. So short of, you know, shopping for another index, I would say that that was, you know, that would be an appropriate index.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
I just want to, that I, I put it out there at the last meeting, if, whether 2% would be an appropriate cap. Other than the vice mayor, I believe there was no other, you know, comment as to, you know, as to, as to a cap. I, I pointed out that a, an incumbent, to be simple, the incumbent city clerk, the steps are 6% increases, you know, so that's collectively an 18% increase over four years. And so a 2% cap would be an 8% cap for, you know, for the entire, you know, the next four years. So you do the math and it's, I think it's very reasonable, you know, for, you know, for under $1,700, there's that $1,700 figure again. That $1,680 would be, you know, the overall increase, you know, for one year. So I think that's, that's reasonable. I'm in favor of, because it's not a, you know, a representative employee, I'm in favor with even putting a clause saying, any, any city council or any future city council does have the right to, you know, to, to alter that, you know, that, that increase. Really, at any given time, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. So the, placing the clause in the, in the resolution is, is, I'm in favor of that.
Good, Chair. So just so I understand, in the fifth year, so person returns to office in the fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth year, there'd be, there's a potential of 2%, 2%, 2%, et cetera. Is that correct?
That would be the maximum.
Yes, there's that potential. So I think on Councilman, Councilmember Salazar's point, because we had discussed that, that it was at least my position that if the employees, and I think it was also of the clerk and the treasurer, were not receiving an increase, or if there were furloughs as there were, then that should not be automatic. That's, that was, I thought, our discussion, I believe that that was a concurrence. The other thing is, is that the only one other aspect that makes me wonder is that it's a potential within four years for 8%. Potentially not, but the maximum. And in essence, I think back to city employees who don't have an automatic cost-of-living index, who don't have that opportunity or potential through meet and confirms, through labor negotiations, which I'm familiar with, being on both sides of those. And so in essence, having it come up every year, we kind of get back to where we were, where, again, it comes back up to the council on an annual basis, really is a position elected by the people. And that, that's the qualification, being a resident, being 18, and being elected. And therefore, you're not unqualified, you've been given that, that trust and that honor to hold that position. So I, I just don't know if the subcommittee had thought that, that means eight, a potential of 8% four years, another 8% four years, and then I'm looking at the other side, even though they're in two different units. I mean, there is no unit here and they're not part of management. So that, that was my only question I throw out to the subcommittee to try to help me understand.
Yes, it was discussed. I think we made it very clear when we first sat down as a subcommittee that the city clerk and the city treasurer position, much like us up sitting up here, we have to be 18 years old, resident of San Bruno, and registered voter. That's why I believe, you know, if you want to question the salaries of, you know, of newly elected, then we've got a, you know, whole other can of worms. But if a city clerk or a city treasurer proves themselves and, you know, and does, you know, capable and competent, you know, service to the community, then they will move on and, and get reelected. And I believe if they're doing the right, if they're, again, doing the job, then I believe after four years, they should get, to me, is, you know, is a, you know, a, you know, a minor, a minor increase. Again, I state, the sitting council, if there's a majority at the city council, we can revisit this and change it, whether it's an election year or not.
Chair, was not the original resolution to have this reviewed at, prior to each election, so that therefore, before the nomination period opens up, that it was clear? Now, again, we're not talking about a newly elected, we're talking about reelected. So that really kind of disqualifies that, but I think in the old resolution, that's what it specified, in the 2006 resolution, if my memory is correct. So then if we're saying it's every year, that it comes before, even if it's a consent item, then that should be, I think, in the resolution, in addition to Councilmember Salazar's point, as far as if there is a lean year with no raises or, and or furloughs.
Well, to address the, the question that was posed, we, we, I concur with Councilman Nembora, we did, we did consider that. And one of the considerations I put a lot of emphasis on is the ability to attract qualified candidates. And if our salary range and the improvement to that salary isn't comparable to what other cities are paying, then the pool of applicants, of course, is going to be greatly diminished. And so in order to keep the, the position attractive to qualified candidates, I think we do need to do something to improve it. So that was, you know, we kicked out, kicked around a lot of ideas, and I think that what we have here in the staff report does reflect the best, best case scenario for what we can do to, like, as I said, keep the, the positions competitive, the salaries competitive.
And I'm just trying to get clarification that the comments that you made as far as adding it into the resolution, Councilmember Salazar and Councilman Ibera, which you discussed in regards to it annually being available to be looked at, reviewed, and/or changed, is in there. That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to ask if on both your comments, that would be included within the resolution.
Can I add something? The four years, starting with 2010, the city treasurer and the city clerk took two years of furlough, which were not voted on by council. We voluntarily just took the furlough and it didn't come before council, as you're suggesting, if all of the city didn't get a cost-of-living raise, I would presume we would not get a cost-of-living raise. I would presume it'd be treated the same as we did the treat, as the furlough was treated.
Well, and I, and I assume you're right, because the last time we discussed, that's what everybody said, John and you. But I think it just needs to be put in there because future persons in that position may not have the same sentiment or the same compassion that you did during those times.
Action by the council?
Through the chair.
Michael.
At, at some point during our discussion here, I'd like to recommend that, that the council provide direction to staff to look into presenting an option to, to the voters of making these positions appointed rather than elected positions. So I don't know if that's something that we would want to discuss and, and recommend or something that we can discuss and recommend, since it's not agendized, it's just providing a suggestion, something that would come back to us, but I would want to see that addressed either as part of this discussion or if it's more appropriate, as part of a separate discussion.
Yeah, I made that pretty clear, my feelings on that. I think we need to look at that very seriously, but it does have to go to the voters and it would have to be at, at a proper election. So I think we can open up that discussion, but can't do a whole lot about it for a while.
Okay. So, yeah, and my thought was that since we're, we're discussing the positions now and we're, we're at a point where we know there are, we know our incumbents are going to remain in office for another four years, that it might be a good time to start looking at that and possibly put something on a ballot in two years and provide plenty of planning time for anyone who might be considering future years, or even if our incumbents were considering running again. But I do think there's a lot of things that need to be considered in terms of what the cost and, costs and benefits would be to the city by making that switch and maybe trying to gauge the appetite of the public for, for making that change. So I think the sooner, the better if we're going to make that, that decision. But having thrown that out there, I'll introduce this particular, actually the first resolution, which is for the salary adjustments for vote.
And with the?
Oh, I'm sorry, with the, with the change that we will add the commentary on reserving the right to not provide an increase on certain years.
Lean years.
May I ask for precise clarification? I've heard discussion about having this reviewed annually by the city council? Or are you, is, is, per Councilmember Medina's comment earlier, is that what the city council is looking for, or are you looking for that to, for this council to exercise discretion at its option when and if a situation were to come again where, where bargaining units are not receiving any adjustments? In other words, initiated by the city council or brought back to you annually?
That's an interesting point, I don't think we-
If I can ask a question, I mean, is, I mean, how, how realistic is that? That we are faced with an annual review and we may not have a decision on our bargaining units at that time either?
Correct.
So how do?
I don't think it should be just an annual review, if I want to just be, for clarification, I think it should just be at the latitude. Right now, my understanding is a resolution, you have to wait four years before you even discuss it now. There would be a 2% for that.
Good point.
That it gave the latitude to the council to be able to review it prior to that point.
Okay.
But not that it would come up for action item every year and we have to go through this.
I, I want to make sure there's no confusion. So, so we will amend the, but your, your proposal would amend the resolution to allow that to be brought back at any time that the council saw fit to do so.
Okay.
Okay, clear?
Okay.
Councilmember Salazar, you introduce, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwain.
Aye.
And we have another resolution we're asking for?
I'll introduce the second resolution amending the cable policy for elected officials.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwain.
Aye.
Item 10G, adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2013-14 fire department budget to include an additional $25,000 for hose.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Before you, is a report that outlines the hose, the hose replacement program.
Sorry. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Before you is a report that outlines the progress we have made in addressing the issue of fire hose replacement in the fire department. During the recent budget process, fire department staff completed a comprehensive analysis of the department hose replacement program. After reviewing this data and presenting it during the budget process, the city council approved an appropriation of $55,000 for the fiscal year 13-14 budget for hose replacement for the front two-line engines. An additional report was presented at the city council meeting on the July 23 city council meeting, which outlined the current state of fire hose on all apparatus. The council then requested staff to bring forward a more aggressive hose replacement plan that would address both frontline and reserve engines. This plan recommends an additional $25,000 for hose replacement. Before you is the resolution, which amends the 13-14 fiscal year budget to appropriate an additional $25,000 towards hose replacement, which would cover the top two frontline engines and the reserve engine, and bring the total for hose replacement for the fiscal year 13-14 to $80,000. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or action by the council?
Through the chair, I think is an example of where we have in, one of our apparatuses up, supporting up at Yosemite area, the firefighters. We're currently using a reserve unit here.
That's correct.
So should that go down, we have that. So I think this is money well spent and we should go forward. And if there's nothing else, okay? I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution for the additional $55,000.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Gee, I almost doubled it. Twenty-five thousand, Carol, can you catch me?
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwain.
Aye.
Item 11, reports of commissions, boards of committees, we had that earlier. Comments from council members, I would just like to remind everyone again about September 9th, the remembrance we're going to have in the Glenview area there. Anyone else?
Through the chair.
Michael.
I just wanted to follow up on my previous item about the recommendation to look into making the treasurer and clerk positions appointed. I wanted to see if I could get concurrence from the council to give that to staff to start researching.
You have my concurrence. Anyone else?
Sure.
Irene? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
When you have time.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, anything else?
Through the, through the chair.
Yes.
With the end of summer, I just wanted to compliment our, our recreation staff, driving through that park every day and seeing all the kids, and then our discussion about the popularity of our swim program year in and year out. Thanks staff, thank the department, thank, thank the residents for, for a good summer.
We already had our closed session, so this meeting is adjourned until September 10.